All right, good evening, everyone. Oh, yeah, here we go. New microphones, new system tonight, so please bear with us. Thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council meeting, coupled with our Planning Commission tonight. Would anyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record reflect that all council members are present, and all council member, or Planning Commission members, except for Commissioner Caddell. Does anyone have any conflict of interest declarations from the council? Seeing none, Planning Commission. Moving into changes or deletions for the agenda?
Changes, Mayor.
Move into public comment, verbal comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. For so into the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. If anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on our agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. Student liaison report. Thank you for joining us today.
Hello. Current events at Cloverdale High School. Congrats to the volleyball game. Volleyball team did fantastic, winning first place in our league, and now they are out of playoffs. The volleyball game was a blast, with JV dominating in a forty-two-zero win, and varsity falling just short. An intense twenty-two-twenty-two finish. Winter sports have officially started academically. Thanksgiving break, eleven through twenty, eleven twenty-four to eleven twenty-eight. Virtual family workshops. Parents and caregivers are invited to boost their capacity to support Yow's mental health in a series of free bilingual virtual workshops hosted by Sonoma County Office of Education and Community Partners. Workshops are held in English and Spanish once a month, and Thursdays from five to six p.m. Community events coming up. Cloverdale Kiwanis Twenty-third Annual Crab and Pasta Feed, Saturday, December thirteenth, dinner served at six fifteen for seventy dollars. FFA National Convention, Rally de Marta, went to workshops and committee meetings, and they voted for infield speedway and dinners and concerts, which took place in Indianapolis.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll warn you ahead of time, be ready, we're going to ask you questions tonight. All right, we will move into proclamations. Tonight, we have a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Lasky?
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, declaring November twenty twenty-five Native American Heritage Month in Cloverdale. Whereas, Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Native Americans to our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, the First American Indian Day in a state was declared on the second Saturday in May nineteen sixteen by the Governor of New York. And whereas, what began at the turn of the twentieth century as an effort to gain a day of recognition for the significant contributions made by the first Americans to the establishment and growth of the United States has since grown into a full month of national observance. Whereas, as of twenty twenty-five, there are five hundred and seventy-four federally-recognized tribes in the United States, each with unique languages, traditions, and culture, cultural practices. And while many Native Americans live on or near reservations, the majority reside in cities and communities throughout the nation. And whereas, indigenous peoples of the Cloverdale region, representing various tribes and descendants of the original inhabitants who have lived upon and cared for these lands for countless generations. And whereas, the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history, heritage, and cultural contributions of these indigenous Americans in our community, and recognize the continued importance of preserving native traditions, languages, and ancestral knowledge. And whereas, the Cloverdale City Council encourages residents to learn more about local and national native history by visiting the Cloverdale, sorry, Cloverdale History Center, and the website would be cloverdalehistoricalsociety.org, the Sonoma County Library, sonomacountylibrary.org, and the official national website, nativeamericanheritagemonth.gov. And whereas, November offers an opportunity for all residents to deepen their understanding of native cultures and histories, while acknowledging the lasting impacts of historical injustices, and celebrating the ongoing resilience and leadership of native people. And now, therefore be it proclaimed, that Todd Landz, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, on behalf of the Cloverdale City Council, do hereby designate November twenty twenty-five as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Cloverdale, and call upon our community to honor and celebrate the rich traditions, achievements, and enduring strength of native peoples. So ordered, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Todd Landz, Mayor. We'd like to welcome Cloverdale Rancheria of Pomo Indians, Tribal Treasurer, Vicky Macias. Welcome.
I got a big mouth, I didn't think I had to. Okay, gotcha. Well, we want to say it was a bit of confusion, but we made it, and we're here because we are the proud people of this indigenous area. The Cloverdale Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California have been here since the beginning of time. We have many triblets, all in this area, that we still look after and maintain when we're able to. A lot of those triblets are now on private property, so we respectfully wait until we are welcome to come. I wasn't going to say it's sweet, just say, guys, no. He told me, "Talk history," and I thought, "You're going to give me three minutes? That don't ever happen." I don't know how to shut up. Anyway, I also laugh a lot when I'm nervous. I think it's, you know, it's very thoughtful, and we're grateful to have this proclamation from the City Council. Unfortunately, we don't know the City Council as well as we knew the previous City Council. We had a close relationship with them, but time hasn't allowed us to get to know each of them as we knew the others. And so, we apologize for that. The proclamation for us are words on a paper, and words on a paper have always been good for us, you know. But we are proud to accept it, on behalf of the City of Cloverdale, and us as the indigenous people of this area. Machamol is who we are, the Samin people. Where southern Pomo was our language, we have a sister tribe down the road that is also southern Pomo. We're very proud of who we are, and we're very proud of our indigenous area here, and all that comes and grows here. And so, we want to thank the City of Cloverdale, the Council, and I apologize my bats to you all, but I ain't getting up on this stage, and I ain't coming down if I go up. But we want to thank you, and we'd like to thank everybody here, and just letting you know, we are here. We have never left, and we have no plans to leave anytime soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vivian, for coming and speaking to the council today and accepting this proclamation. Just want to really acknowledge that I think we could all do a better job of really meeting you where you're at and being engaged. I think it really is our job to reach out and appreciate that you're sharing your history, and also, we should acknowledge the modern efforts of the tribes. Some people say that this is wine country, this is first and foremost, Pomo country.
Thank you very much, and what stood out to me right there is we do need to get to know each other a little bit better. So, I apologize for myself up here on the council. I will definitely reach out. I do know a few folks, but that's a working relationship right there we need to have to make everything work. So, we'll reach out, and we'll get to know each other, believe me, and let's work together. But thank you for showing up, I appreciate it.
Same from me. There's been a lot of missed opportunities, like we discussed a little bit ago, and I apologize for that. Thank you. I know you probably haven't known me, but I've known you for a long time, and like I said, the Hermestios and the Santanas and everyone, we've all been here a long time, and I appreciate all of you, and I look forward to better relationships in the future, and really building on what we have already. So, thank you for being here, it really means a lot to us. You guys mind if we take a picture with you, with the proclamation? Can you do the proclamation as well?
You come on down.
We'll come along down.
I want to introduce the second elder of our tribe, the eldest.
Okay, tonight, we also have Sherri Smith Ferry from the Dry Creek tribe, who is here. They just built a new division on the south end of town for their elder housing, and she was also invited to come and talk a little bit about their history. So, Sherri, do you mind joining us?
Hi, my name is Sherri Smith Ferry. I'm Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for Dry Creek Rancheria. Actually, do a lot of work with Vicky. We're working on projects close to our home, and proud to be relations and neighbors. And like Vicky said, we've lived here forever. This is really the place where we were made, and the place that was made for us. Learned some things over those years, so I was thinking about what to share tonight, and I thought I would share what, something that my grandmother said. I didn't have time to mark the books, so give me a minute. My mother told me, we had many relatives, and we all had to learn to live together. So, we better learn how to get along with each other. My mother said it wasn't too hard to do. It was just like taking care of your younger brother or sister. And I should say, she came from a family of thirteen, so she definitely knew how to take care of younger brothers and sisters. She said you got to know them, find out what they like, and what made them cry, so you'd know what to do. If you took good care of them, you didn't have to work as hard. That sounds like it's not true, but it is. When that baby gets to be a man or a woman, they're going to help you out. You know, I thought she was talking about us Indians, and how we're all supposed to get along. I found out later by my older sister, mother wasn't just talking about Indians, but the plants, and the animals, and the birds, everything on this earth. They are all our relatives, and we better know how to act around them, or they're going to get after us. Thank you.
Sherri, thank you so much.
I should also say, we're very much happy to be a part of the community of Cloverdale, and really look forward to getting to know you all, too. Bye.
Sherri, can we get a picture with you as well? One thing I do want to say is, Vicky said it best, words on the paper are just words. So, we, as a council and city, really want to make sure we work better with both tribes, and thank you guys for both being here. The Joint City Council, Planning Commission, Esmeralda update. Kevin?
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we have a presentation from Esmeralda. You know, they've been doing a lot of community meetings, and really keeping us informed, and listening to all our comments, and taking those seriously, and, you know, changing the project as a result of those, so we're grateful for that. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update on the design, an overview of the entitlements. So, as we work through the next few months, we're going to be seeing a lot more of Esmeralda, the Planning Commission. Thanks for coming, Planning Commission, by the way, so we thought we could kill two birds with one stone. So, that's called the entitlement process, and we're going to get an overview of that. And then, just a preview of the economic analysis, so they have paid, or they've hired a consultant to give us an analysis of what the project will mean financially to the town. So, just with that, I'll turn it over to the team. We got Devin Zugel and Michael Yarni. Jess, I don't know if you're going to be involved, but, okay.
Hit the button on your microphone.
Does that work now?
Oh, boy.
There we go. Thank you so much for having us, and thank you for setting up this special hearing with the Planning Commission as well. We're really happy to be here. As Kevin mentioned, we've been working really hard on our plan for the Alexander Valley Resort site, and we've been working closely with the community and city staff to design this project, and we wanted to share the progress so far, and give you a bit of a preview of what's to come in the next few months. Is there a way that I can go to the next slide, or do I just say next? Thank you. So, at this point, you probably know, especially council members and planning commissioners, where the site is, but just to lay the groundwork, the site is in the southeastern end of Cloverdale. It's within the city boundaries, and of course, within the UGB, the urban growth boundary as well. Next slide. Thank you, and it has absolutely beautiful views. This is a photo from the site, and it's got these sweeping views of the Maya Comas Mountains. Next slide. Something else you might know about the site is that it has been approved for development for over twenty years, and a number of different developers have come through with different visions for the site, and we are building on that, and we have some changes to that plan that we are proposing, but really, we're building off of what's already there. Next slide. Before the approvals, the site went through a lot of different changes. In the nineteen fifties, it was still small farms and open space, but by the nineteen seventies, it was an active lumber mill. And if anyone here remembers the Louisiana Pacific facility, that was right here on the site, and it also had a lot of active wood waste. By the time the mill closed, then, and the site was starting to be considered for development, there was a lot of remediation work that was done. And today, there's still some auto shops and warehouses on the north end of the property, but the rest of it is still pretty open, the mill is gone, and almost all of the environmental remediation is complete, except for one small corner that we can point out later. So, to, next slide. So, as Kevin mentioned, we've been working to prepare an entitlements package, and we plan to be submitting it for approvals in early twenty twenty-six, but we're going to be submitting a draft later this month, in fact, with all of the design work that we're about to walk you through, as well as a lot of engineering and beyond. Next slide. So, is it okay if I hold this up? There we go, then I won't have to crouch. Actually, do you mind going back one? Okay, yes, forward, thank you. So, we mentioned that we've been running an extensive public process, in addition to the last year, two years of hosting big public events where we've invited the Cloverdale community and the broader Sonoma community. In the last six months, we've done a really intensive process focused on the development project. We've hosted open houses, picnics, workshops, mixers, and all sorts of different events, trying to learn from the Cloverdale community, what is it that they'd like to see on the site, and get their feedback on our ideas to be able to tie that into the process. Next slide. On the left, you'll see the last approved plan for the site. This is the specific plan, and on the right is what we are proposing. The first thing you'll notice is that they're very similar. The use districts will have slightly different names, but they will really follow the same pattern of the mixed use with the resort, with the residential areas. One of the changes that we're making is that we'd like to actually decrease the development footprint of the site, in order to have more public open space and parks. And another detail that we'll get into a lot more into later is that on the east side, which is sort of up on this plan, we are proposing to build a giant public park and actually gift it to the city, although we would keep on to the mainness. Next slide. And here's a slightly bigger view of that same plan, and we're going to go through each of the specific areas, one by one, later in this presentation. Next slide. So, here's an image of the site today, and the next slide will show you, if you can go to the next slide, we'll show you the site plan that we're planning to propose. And so, here's what we're calling the illustrative site plan. It shows the high-level circulation of the site, like where we plan to put the key roads and trail networks, and we'll take you on a tour of this in just a moment. Next slide. One of the features of this plan that I'm personally most excited about is what we call the Esmeralda necklace. So, one of our big goals with this project is to make the neighborhood very walkable and bikeable, and this necklace is a trail system that goes all around the site and connects into other trails, both on the site, as well as trails like the Great Redwood Trail and the Smart Path, and the bike lane that we plan to build into downtown Cloverdale and the shuttle, as a way of creating circulation through. And we'll get to go on a little tour of the Esmeralda necklace in a moment. Next slide. As we created this plan, one of the key guiding principles was to work with the landscape. Next slide. There's some really beautiful oak trees on this site, and so, one of our number-one priorities was to preserve those oak trees. And next slide, we'll show you how we also plan to extend those groves. We like to call these the green fingers, and we, this site, as we mentioned, is a former industrial site, and we'd like to restore it to what we think it would have been like if that hadn't been there, and create these beautiful natural habitats that are groves within the little village neighborhoods. Next slide. And then, here's where that necklace ties in throughout that entire site, and beyond the orange lines that you're seeing on the page, there will be additional pathways throughout the project as well. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, we'll go for a walk now along the necklace, and you'll get to see what, some of the experiences that you'll get to experience when you walk there. And one of our goals here is not just making it walkable and bikeable, but also making it really welcoming to the entire Cloverdale community. So, yes, this here shows, we're going to start, if you can go to the next slide, we'll start at the location of the hotel, and on the next slide, here is a concept rendering of a potential hotel design. I should give a really big caveat here, that this is not the final design for the hotel at all. The purpose of this is to make sure that the site is large enough to fit the rooms and the program that we have planned, but ultimately, we're going to beat this plan up and change it a lot. One of the things that we plan to persist in any future version of the plan, though, is breaking it up into multiple buildings, so that we don't have one large institution that doesn't fit with the landscape. We want to keep this village scale. On the next slide, you'll see what we're calling the piazza, which is bordering on the hotel. It will, the restaurant hotel will spill out into this public open space that anyone in Cloverdale or beyond can come into and be part of, and we want this to feel really lively. And one aspect of the design that I think is really beautiful is that it's going to be a three-sided piazza, with the fourth side, that beautiful view of the Maya Comas Mountains. Next slide. As we walk along the necklace, now we're walking southwards, we get to what we call the promenade, and off in the distance, you can see the piazza and the hotel, and this is going to be almost like a boardwalk, but instead of an ocean, it'll have the beautiful park that you look down into a bowl with wildflowers, and it should be really, really nice. Continuing on, the next slide, we'll show you the residential areas. Perfect. So, on the screen, you'll see some of the precedent resident typologies that we find really inspiring, and the thing to focus on is more the density and the relationship of these homes to the street, as opposed to the architectural style, per se. For example, the photo on the right shows a lovely porch, and we would love to have a lot of porches in this project, where people can sit and talk to their neighbors, and really bring that old town of Cloverdale feel into this new neighborhood, and give it this feeling of sort of classic small town. And you'll see that most of, we'll both have a mixture of And you'll see that most of, we'll both have a mixture of single-family homes, town homes, and also places that potentially allow for people to have like pedestrian pathways through the neighborhood as well. Next slide. So I mentioned that we want to preserve and enhance those existing woodland groves, and here are some precedent images that we find really inspiring of the sorts of places that we love, and we'd love to turn those woodland groves into something that looks a bit like this, and those will be really fun to get into the details of the design. Next slide. So continuing on the necklace, you go, now we're on the eastern side of the site where we are planning to build a giant river park and gift it to the city of Cloverdale, and we both plan to have a mixture of natural habitat preservation, and also, on the next slide, you'll see also having more active uses like playgrounds, and on the next slide, you'll see sculpture gardens, and I think, I really love the sculpture walk in Cloverdale, and I'd love to extend that into the site and have that be a link that connects this project and this neighborhood into the rest of the town. Next slide. And then, you'll see, now we're almost all the way around the necklace. On the northern end of the site, we're planning to build a giant outdoor amphitheater that could hold up to 50 people, sorry, 500 people, much larger. And the idea is that this could be used for concerts, performances, weddings, when people come to the hotel for work events, they, you know, you could have a large group event at the amphitheater. But one of the things that we also like about this idea and these precedents is that even when they're completely empty and there's nothing happening, it's a beautiful outdoor space feature, and you could imagine walking along on your own and still really enjoying it. On the next slide. So here, you'll see that we've created an aerial of what this whole neighborhood might look like once it's built out. I should give a disclaimer that none of the exact buildings will be built just like that. This is sort of the general pattern of development, but what you'll notice is that there's green fingers, those woodland groves that go between the neighborhoods, and most of the land is actually left as public open space, and that's something that's really important to us. And finally, this idea of really taking advantage of the natural beauty of Cloverdale and the Maya Comas Mountains is something that is just so special about this site. So I'll, one of the things that we really care about and hopefully come through throughout this whole tour is that we really want this neighborhood to be part of Cloverdale and to benefit all of Cloverdale. And so I'll hand it off to my colleague, Michael, who will talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Devin, and I'm grateful to be here tonight before the council and Planning Commission, so thanks for having us. Next slide, please. So you're getting a preview of what's called the Draft Fiscal and Economic Impact Study, Kaiser Marston Associates, KMA, independent consulting firm that does these for cities all across Northern California. When we reached out to the city manager, he recommended we reach out to Kaiser Marston, and so we did. We're going to give you a preview of what their study's saying, but if you're really interested, it will be published November 21st, the draft. Next slide. So just the first thing, the purpose of the study, I already mentioned, it'll be published in draft form on November 21st, and a final version will be available for the public January of next year. What it does is it focuses on the economic impacts on the city, both the fiscal, the city's budget, but also economic multipliers like jobs. It also looks at the impact for city, excuse me, for agencies outside the city, like the county, for example. It looks at how it'll affect those agencies. And then finally, it looks at countywide job and income growth. So the study does all of that. It follows a particular set of standards that cities all around the North Bay use when they assess the impact of a new project. Next. Next slide, please. Sorry, go back one slide, or I mean, excuse me, next slide. Okay, there we go. And in terms of the methods, we provided all of the data, all the project program and the market data. Kaiser Marston reviewed and validated it, and then Kaiser Marston polled on the Cloverdale budget, the Cloverdale city budget, to estimate per capita costs, the additional service costs of people moving to the site. We want to look at both sides of the ledger. How much tax are we bringing, and how much costs are we imposing on the city? Something else that Kaiser Marston did, which I think was wise, is they conservatively estimated that 75% of these new units will be principal residences, people living here full-time. I think that's a little conservative. We don't have any, there's no way for us to know the exact number, but we think it might end up being 50/50. 50% second homes and 50% permanent residents. Obviously, if it's a second home, the budget impact on the city is far less than if it's a full-time resident. Next. So out of that came some interesting information. First of all, you may not know this, but the site today, the entire 266-acre site only generates $80,000 year annually in property tax. That's it. So we're starting out at an extremely low base. Kaiser Marston estimates that upon build-out, the assessed value of the land will be over $945 million. The city collects 22 cents of every new property tax dollar. That's a lot of property tax. Furthermore, the resort hotel, when it's fully operational and built out, is expected to generate 2.6 million in gross transient occupancy tax, TOT revenues, that go directly to the city. Next. The big news is that KMA, Kaiser Marston, estimates that upon build-out, the project will generate a $2.2 million net fiscal surplus to the city of Cloverdale. That's after accounting for costs. That's the net, 2.2 annually. In addition, outside of the city, Kaiser Marston estimates the project will generate an additional $6 million of net new annual property tax. As you may know, the other 78 cents of every property tax dollar flows to other agencies, including school fund. The Cloverdale Area Wide Unification Fund is expected to receive an additional $2 million annually from the property taxes generated from the site when it's built out. Last but not least, the current, Kaiser Marston estimates that of 480 direct jobs will be generated by the project, with over 200 indirect, or what they call induced, jobs in economic terms. Next. Here's just a graph that shows the net costs, excuse me, gross costs and gross revenues on the left, and then the green, the dark green bar is the net surplus to the city's general fund. Next. In addition to annual, the dollar amounts I was showing you earlier were annual, there would be some one-time revenues to Cloverdale. We estimate 2.5 million of one-time sales and use revenue from the construction itself, and Esmeralda, the project, with its infrastructure, substantial stormwater, wastewater, potable water, electrical, roads, streets, parks, schools, fire fees, collectively, the project should be paying out about $77.5 million. That's both in-kind improvements, like the park, and also impact fees, like school impact fees, fire, police, et cetera. Next. With that, I'll pass it back to Devin.
Thank you, Michael. So another way in which we are really excited to contribute to Cloverdale and tie this new neighborhood into Cloverdale is with the giant river park that I mentioned at the beginning. Next slide. So in July, we hosted a workshop where we shared some of, some initial ideas and some constraints around the park and some of the opportunities, and then we also asked the Cloverdale community for feedback and input on what they'd like to see in the park. And so what you're going to see in the next few slides will, is the result of a lot of those conversations. Next slide. We've also had a lot of different conversations with various stakeholders and advisors throughout Sonoma County as we shape this park, because we see this as a regional resource that will bring people from all around, and in particular, once the Great Redwood Trail is built out, this could actually be an incredible jumping-off point for people on a long bike trip. There's also going to be interesting impacts on water and the river, and we're really interested in making sure that this park contributes to all of those systems. Next slide. So here's what it looks like today, and we'll walk you through some of the ideas we have for what it can look like in the future. So next slide. So first and foremost, we really care about habitat conservation and restoration. One fact about the side of the site is that after Louisiana Pacific was done, they, there ended up being a huge amount of wood waste that was put on the east side of the site. We call it the Twinkie, and it's about 100, a million cubic yards of wood waste mixed with dirt. And so what we'd like to do is come and come in and really preserve and expand the habitats that were there before all of this disturbance was completed. Next slide. We're also interested in making this accessible to the public. Right now, it's been, it's been closed and private for a long time, and we'd love to bring in the Cloverdale public and also the people who are going to move into this new neighborhood and make, give people more access to the river again. And so that includes hiking trails, parking lots, smart pathway, and beyond. Next slide. So that's sort of the baseline of what we plan to do, but we have some ideas for how we could do even more, and with partnerships, everything I'm about to share is possible, and we'll explain what that means in a moment. Next slide. So here's a photo of the site and some of our neighbors, and we're looking south, and so if you go, if you look at the southern part of the site, there's, the airport is right there, and you can see that the Russian River has been completely flooded out in this photo. And you, first, when I, when I first saw this, I saw a problem, but the second time I looked at it, I thought, oh, there's actually an opportunity here. Next slide. The site and Cloverdale lie in the very middle of the Russian River watershed, and of course, water is a really important issue throughout all of Northern California, and so when we saw all of that sitting water, just lying there, we thought, hmm, maybe there's something that we can do about that. Next slide. So I mentioned the Twinkie, which is that big wood waste pile on the east side of the site. If we were to move that or shift it around, we could actually cause the flooding to come into our property, into the park, and this would only happen a few times a year at most. And this would allow for less flooding downstream, such as some of our neighbors and especially the airport, but also, it's an opportunity to do what's called alluvial aquifer recharge, which is basically when you slow down water, and it's not rushing down the Russian River, you can slow it down and it'll actually seep back into the water, which will increase the amount of water accessible for other uses. Next slide. Here are some diagrams and precedent images of various types of groundwater aquifer recharge and also banking, and there, we could nerd out for a long time about how this works, but it's something that we're really interested in pursuing. Next slide. When you expand the floodplain, you also create new opportunities for habitat, and this actually, when we look at the old photos of the site, the river used to flood into our site before that big mound was there. So what we'd like to be doing is really bring things back to the way that the river wants to be. Next slide. There's a bunch of floodable parks around the world that we find very inspiring. One that's close to home is on the bottom left, the Napa River Floodable Park is a huge inspiration, and they've designed this where almost most days of the year, you can access it and bike around, but on a really heavy rainstorm day, it'll fill up, and instead of flooding the town, it floods the park, which is a much better idea. Next slide. So here's what it could look like, you know, in a non-flooded scenario, and then those few days of the year when it does flood, it would look like the next slide. And the exact placement of where the water flows would go and the islands are something that we still, are still designing, but this shows sort of the high-level concept of what's possible. Next slide. So I mentioned that the earlier parts of the park, that's what we describe as our baseline. I also mentioned that there's a million cubic yards of dirt on the east side, and that is a lot of dirt, and it is really expensive to move, but there's also so many benefits to the entire region ecologically, and so we're actively pursuing various public-private partnerships with groups that are interested in riparian restoration, aquifer recharge, and beyond, and so that's something that we're working on, and we're bringing this up to you, because if you know of any grants that we should be going for, or any groups that we should be talking to, we'd love to have those conversations. Next slide. So this slide's a little bit misformatted, but now I'm going to hand it off to Michael, where he's going to talk about what to expect from the entitlement package that's going to be coming down the pike.
Thank you, and I'll try to pick it up. I think we're almost over our 20 minutes target. Okay, I'm going to go quick, and then, please, all the questions are welcome. I'm going to walk through the primary, we're going to be bringing a big package of items to both the commission and to the council, so we just wanted to preview them. The first is the third addendum to the 2008 EIR. As you guys know, there was an enormous EIR done on this project. This would be the third addition to it. It will capture all those changes that we just previewed, okay? Next. We are proposing a set of substantial amendments to the 2018 Alexander Valley Resort specific plan. So you've seen a preview of some of the land use changes. That'll come as a full document for your review. Next. We are, you may know, or if you're new to the council, maybe not, but there's a special zoning district that applies specifically to the specific plan, and it's called SP-1. We'll be also updating that zoning. That's part of the package. Next. Finally, well, not finally, almost finally, there is a fourth item, which is we will be amending, substantially amending, the 2018 Development Agreement. As you may know, that's like a contract between the developer, sponsor, and the city. We're working right now with the city manager and the city attorney on that document. Included in that document, next, is a document called the Infrastructure Finance Plan, which lays out public-private financing for the project. The Community Facilities District, which is a special assessment that buyers and owners in the district would pay on top of property taxes to help pay for the extraordinary amount of infrastructure, roadways, sewers, et cetera, and a TOT, the transient occupancy tax. We're exploring a deal with the city that helps the hotel get off the ground in the first 10 years, and then goes to 100% TOT to the city in the later years. And then last but not least, we're looking at an EIFD. I know there's a lot of acronyms, that's Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, where some portion of the city's property taxes would help underwrite some of the public infrastructure that would be required for the project. And then next and last, we are also bringing forward a master tentative map, so we are going to submit in the same package, a fully engineered map that lays out all the grading, all the streets, all the sewers, all the dry electrical, the whole roadmap. This will address the major rights of way and all the large parcels that you saw in those previous images. All of these will be available in draft form, well in advance of your final hearings in early March and in later March. Next. Many of you might be asking, when does this start, if at all? We estimate full build-out in about roughly 11 years from today. We're on year one right now, that is, Community Input and Infrastructure Design. We'll be moving, we hope, to approvals in the new year, and then we would close on the site. We do not own the site yet. We will close on the site after approvals, and then we will start to move, accelerate infrastructure design. If all goes well, we could begin rough grading in the major utilities in year four. So if you're wondering, bulldozers will show up tomorrow? No. We're talking at best, four years from now, maybe if we do really well, three and a half years. We expect the project to get built out over the, from year five to year 11, with hopefully the hotel opening in year six. We would like the hotel to come first. Next. Okay. I guess, we maybe should stop now, and we'd love to have your questions, and thanks for your patience. It was a lot to present.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to start with our Planning Commission, and we'll just go right down the row, and let you guys run through your questions if you would like. First, questions, comments, and concerns. I don't know if you want to have us bring you a microphone that you can share, or how you want to handle it. I'll let you guys decide. Who wants to go first? Mr. Carney, thank you. I appreciate you raising your hand right there.
I'm good for the moment, right? I'll hand off.
All right, if you're good, just go ahead and... All right, if you're good, just go ahead and work your way down.
Yeah, you mentioned the delay of the TOT for 10 years. What's the proposition for that?
Yes. The existing development agreement has a, the existing, that previously approved development agreement has a TOT rebate, where the developer would submit receipts for public infrastructure and get reimbursed with TOT, with some TOT rebate. So no matter what, the developer, the hotel operator, excuse me, pays the TOT, and then the existing DA says some of that comes back to help offset infrastructure. We're proposing changing that formula to make it a little less complicated. We're proposing that the first 10 years of operation, the TOT be split 50/50. 50% would go back to help operations, to get the hotel off the ground. 50% would go to the city. After year 11 of operations, 100% of the TOT would go to the city.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you for coming forward and bringing this proposal. I know you spend a lot of time with the community, kind of feeling people out, what they want to see, and I'm glad to see that there are changes that are made to accommodate some of those. I view this as a preliminary overview, and so accordingly, I'm just going to reserve any questions or comments I have until I see the water supply assessment, until I actually see the, the project proposal itself. But thank you.
I think a question that is on a lot of people's minds, originally, the original resort proposal was targeting very high-end housing. What is your target housing demographic now?
Great question. So one of our goals is to have a wide range of housing types, everything from small studio units all the way up to large multi-generational homes. And a big part of that is that we'd like this neighborhood to really be a place that people could live their entire lives if they wanted to, in every stage of life possible. And so we're targeting a very wide range there, and one of the other types of housing that we plan to have is, we're proposing 200 units of senior housing as well, because I know that especially in Sonoma County, there aren't so many options there. So that's one of the, one of the targets that we have.
I wanted to elaborate further. These will all be market rate. I do want to be very clear about that. We are not doing tax credit or below-market rate subsidized, but what we are doing is what some call affordable by design, which means that the price points actually should be pretty, like, a studio could be as low as, you know, 400,000. I know that, we're in California, folks, that's not. And the larger homes that Devin has mentioned could be several million, so there will be a true range. But we want to be very straightforward about that. Something else, you, because you guys are planning commissioners, you probably know this, but many don't, Cloverdale is unique in my experience. Cloverdale is exceeding its regional housing needs targets for low and very low housing production. I've never seen anything like it in all my 20 years of real estate work, so I want to commend Cloverdale for that. Interestingly, Cloverdale is underperforming in the moderate and above-moderate housing. And so the good news with our project is we can help fill that gap and generate property tax for the city.
Just to expand on that, the affordable housing does not provide property tax, which...
Thanks, because I was actually going to follow up, because I think that a lot of community members don't understand that a lot of the affordable housing that we have brought in doesn't really generate any revenue for...
It's the, it's called the welfare exemption, so most nonprofits are nonprofit, and they file so that they don't have to pay local property taxes. By the way, this has nothing to do, having low-income, below-market rate housing is great, because there's a lot of workers who can't afford to live here otherwise. That being said, for fiscal balance, it's good also to have market rate housing.
Another question is obvious water storage, and I don't think you guys need to elaborate on it, but if you guys could just give us a broad overview of, that there is a plan in place for additional water storage?
Great. Two things I want to say. First, we are excited to come before the council next month with a full exhaustive water supply and water supply verification report. It's robust. We spent a lot of time, we got a lot of good feedback from the city, and so we have some good news to share on that front, and I invite you to come to that city council hearing, and to look at the documents. So first of all, I just wanted to shout out to everybody, this will be publicly available. Next, you saw some of the innovative approaches we're taking with the east side park. What we didn't mention, because there's a lot to share, and we're always happy to meet one-on-one, is we're also going to capture all of our stormwater onsite, all of it, and our intention is to retain it, in some cases, stormwater ponds. And the whole point of that is not only is it an ecological amenity, but it also helps with recharge. You guys know, city, the city of Cloverdale draws its water from the subsurface alluvial flows. And so anything we can do to recharge that subsurface alluvial flow is a plus for not only Cloverdale, but for all the downstream users. So in that sense, we'll be doing retention. And then last but not least, we're really interested in gray water recycling, but we're going to be doing extensive studies to look at, can we capture our bath water, our shower water, our sink water, reuse it onsite for irrigation.
Actually, I'll add one more. We also do have a plan to add two water tanks to the site, which will support the entire water system for Cloverdale, and not just about adding water storage, but also supporting water pressure and general health of the, of the system.
I should say, Devin was kind and said plans, we're obligated to do that. It's one of the major pieces of infrastructure. The development agreement requires us to do that, and in all likelihood, it'll be done in phase one.
So hypothetically, if you had low income in there, isn't, if, is that something that you could forego as a concession? If you had target low-income housing, would, would you be able to say, we're going to build it without putting these water tanks on here?
I think so. I think that, here's the, you know, amazing thing about humans, we all need water, low-income and upper-income. So my understanding is the city needs that water pressure. My understanding is that that zone of the water distribution network is inadequate, or they expect, this is a necessity. So whether the units were BMR or market rate, they would still be the same need.
You mentioned, I think, three different areas where, like, the sharing of the TOT, the taxes, and there was a couple of other things that I kind of, that went by me really quickly. I wonder, in terms of a project of this scale, in a city the size of Cloverdale, if that kind of sharing is kind of the standard, or, I don't know, maybe Kevin can answer that But yeah, how much the city has to support or forego income in order to facilitate the
I can't speak to the scale of the city, but having worked on many projects like this in San Francisco as well, when a project is doing a development agreement, which this project is, and includes an infrastructure finance plan, you very commonly see creative financing, like a rebate for TOT, or what we're proposing, a community facilities district. And the other third one is an increment of EIFD, Infrastructure Finance District. For example, this is not Cloverdale, but in San Francisco, Treasure Island, the big treasure island everyone knows about, that is, almost all that infrastructure is being financed by an EIFD. That's where the city of County San Francisco is giving back the property tax to the developer to subsidize the extraordinary infrastructure costs there. So, small or big, the problems are the same, right? It's how do you get something off the ground? And what, why we think this is a great approach is, it's a shared, you know, in this case, we're raising capital and taking the risk of hoping the hotel works, and we've run the numbers, and what will help us attract an operator and a brand for the hotel is, they need to know that they're, they have enough operating revenue to get by. And so this is kind of, but we applied in the beginning, and then the whole point is you can take the scaffolding away, once the hotel is well-established and all the TOT flows.
One thing to add, too, is it's a very challenging time to build hotels right now, and they can make, for great operating businesses, but it's very hard for them to pay for land. And so what that means practically is getting them sort of on their feet, and making it so that they're very attractive to investors on day one, is very critical. It's, usually it takes some time for hotels to ramp up, if, you know, on day one, no one's heard of it, no one's coming, and so, but the operating costs might still be just as high as in the future when everyone's there. And so this kind of gets them to that stabilization, where they've got the beds full, and then they can, can go off on their own. So this is, we, we see the hotel as really important for the success of this neighborhood, and we know that it's really important for the city as well, and this is what it will take to get that hotel to thrive and, and be that engine for the whole city.
I want to add one more thing. All of this will be laid out in that fiscal and economic impact report in great clarity. Exact amount we're proposing that would be rebated, and what, what that looks like dollar-wise, and, and city manager and the city attorney are proving to be good negotiators, and their job is to look at it all, and we have a dialogue about what's the right balance.
But Michael, just to clarify, the, for the infrastructure financing district, which is really the amount of property tax we're getting now versus what we will be getting, we're going to come to some negotiated number, so you're not proposing to take all of that?
Absolutely not.
It kind of sounds like, and then also, the county contributes some of that as well, is that correct, or?
Yeah, my understanding is that Sonoma County has adopted an official EIFD policy, and it's a give-to-get policy. The county will match or contribute a certain, a percentage of its dollar if the city of Cloverdale contributes. And so we're going to rely on a mix of the CFD, I know it's a lot, it's a mouthful, the CFD, the TOT, and the EIFD together to get this thing off the ground. Devin said it right, once the people are here and the place, people know the place, it's proven, the market's proven, it's much easier than to have all the TOT flow to the city.
And I actually wanted to highlight something that Kevin said, which, the word increment in the Enhanced Increment Finance District, what that means is that, Michael talked about there, right now, we're paying 80, well, not we, the current property owner is paying $80,000 a year in property tax, that property tax will grow substantially, it will grow 300x. And that increment wouldn't happen if it weren't for the hotel and all of the other development happening. And so what we would be doing is taking a piece of that, as opposed to taking a piece of existing revenue. So it's a piece of the revenue that wouldn't otherwise be there.
Hold on. Now, we've got to go through our turns first, I apologize. So we're going to go through our planning commission, and then we'll go through our city, and then we'll come down to the public. Absolutely, ma'am. Absolutely.
So I just wanted to say thank you also for the presentation. Looking forward to seeing the draft documents as they come later in the month, and we'll see, there's so many different interesting aspects of this project, it could be fun to look at to the depth.
And thank you for bearing with us with all the acronyms. That's why we're coming to you so many times, because at some point, they'll all sink in.
Planning commission, anything else right now? All right, we'll bring it up to council.
Thank you for the presentation. I got a million questions, and I'm sure they'll be asked as we move forward and you come back to present to council. I would imagine some of the public would want to know, I mean, there's a lot of hit pieces in your presentation, and I was just trying to pull some of that out. And just, on a, on a low level, of course, water is a big issue. You did say something about the floodplain, and you, I think you used the term about moving the river. You know, Mother Nature has a way of overriding human interaction, so I would want to make sure that we're good partners with the river.
Yes, happy to speak to that. I probably said it a little wrong. What I meant was when the river floods, currently, it floods into our neighbors, and actually, the prior owners of the site have already moved the river. Here we go, this is the perfect picture. So if you can see where the AVR site is, highlighted in yellow, it's all dry in this photo, and that is not historically how it was. That, that mound of dirt was not originally there. And so when the river historically flooded, it would flood into the AVR site, but now that that Twinkie is there, it blocks it and it causes flooding all over the area. And so what we'd like to do is restore it to what it used to be, and really trying to listen to what the, what the river wants. The, the primary channel of the river will remain the same without our impact, and this is really for flood events, giving it space to flood into. So I'm glad that you clarified that.
To elaborate even further, in addition, on top of all of that, there's a recorded conservation easement, that entire band of cottonwood and trees that bound the river, all of that is, even if we wanted to, we're not allowed to touch or displace. So I can't emphasize enough how much conservation and protection of that river edge habitat is number one.
Okay, just like I said, if some public understands that you guys are going to go in there with bulldozers, start moving the river. Just want to point that out.
Thank you for clarifying. That is the opposite of what we want to do.
Okay, and then, like I said, my notes are kind of all over the place, and I'll try to keep it short and sweet, but who is going to run the hotel? Do you guys have a partner? You just keep saying, you know, very generic, the hotel, hotel. Who's going to partner with you?
Yeah, you know the old, what's it, chicken and egg? It's the classic thing, where we have to get the entitlements far enough along that we can attract a partner who's willing to commit. So we're dancing, we're dating a bunch of partners right now, for lack of a better word. There are some brands that I think everyone would really appreciate and respect, but out of, we're in a process of having them compete. And so we are targeting what they now call luxury or ultra-luxury, these are the terms of the industry. This would be a high-end hotel. We need to do that to justify the construction costs. But we are not, just to be clear, the spirit of this is local, the spirit of this is special. We're not looking at brands that are generic, though we're looking at a more boutique brand. And if we're lucky, when we present to you in March, we'll be able to share more.
So your, so your idea is 100 rooms, 200 rooms?
Oh, yeah. We've done an underwriting at 120 rooms, and that included as well what we call resort apartments, 16 resort apartments that are condos that people can buy, that are run by the hotel. So if you add that together, that's 136 rooms, but our entitlements in the existing EIR would allow us to do up to 200 rooms. So the maximum we could do is 200 rooms, the minimum, zero, but we don't think this works without a hotel. For us, the hotel is a keystone.
So, so that mentality, who are you planning to, you know, what's the marketing of the hotel? Who are you bringing to Cloverdale to enjoy all that is, to fill 200 rooms?
Yeah. Well, we did a market study with a firm called HVS, which is considered the preeminent hotel consulting firm in the world, actually. We did a competitive study of the wine country, and they identified, they said there's a lack of conference space and rooms that are big enough to support off-site business events. So we're actually looking at a mix of the typical wine country tourist, who wants to come to be, participate, and see the beauty, try the food, drink the wine, so that category, which is pretty obvious. But apparently, according to the competitive study, there's a big gap for off-site corporate retreats. So we would also like to bring in during the down season, firms that would do company retreats. And then last but not least, as Devin has shown previously, there's a nonprofit educational institution called the Esmeralda Institute, and the goal, as you guys know, we've hosted these events in Hillsburg, bringing all kinds of money to local Hillsburg businesses, we would like to be basing that organization and doing that event annually out of the hotel. So the answer is a lot of different demographics would be served.
Okay.
I'd love to, do you mind if I add to that real quick? The, one of the reasons why the hotel is so central to this is because we would like to have a place where we can host that month-long event, and have a place where people can stay for a long time. Another piece that we're excited about with the hotel, and is something that we're pressing and sharing very extensively with the potential partners, is this idea, something, there's sort of two types of hotels. There's usually more urban hotels that are very bustling and in the heart of something, and there's also more that are, hotels that are more in the wilderness or in nature and sort of tucked away from everything. And we have this really unique opportunity to have a mix of both, where one side of the hotel can face into the piazza, and there can be lively, you know, wine bar and restaurants, but the other side of the hotel can face to the Maya Comas Mountains and the vineyards. And that's really rare, even in wine country, to have that combination. So people who are drawn to that combo, and I like to joke, like, both the introverts and the extroverts of the family can, can enjoy that type of hotel.
And then the, the number you guys put out there for 480... And then the number you guys put out there for 480 direct jobs, is that hotel-related jobs?
Yeah, that's first and foremost, the hotel, no question. It's also the additional 22,000 square foot of retail restaurants. It's all the service workers as well, cleaners, the maintenance and operations team. Yeah, so that's who that represents.
So when you say service-related employees, those are basically, are you saying minimum wage jobs where that type of work would happen?
I think there'd be a whole range, you know, from the GM to the person who might have the entry-level service cleaning job, for example. I think there'd be a full range.
So we'd be looking at possibly people commuting into your neighborhood to work, basically?
Given the realities of housing costs in the wine country, that is probably the case. I should add, though, this is worth noting, there is a, you know, you saw our land use plan, those blue mixed-use parcels. I think there's, we have a real interest in workforce housing, if we can make it pencil. Because those sites would be perfect for that.
Well, yeah, because like you say, you were alluding to earlier that Cloverdale doesn't have any high end. But then, you know, you're going back to say you're going to have all these 480 service jobs, but service jobs don't normally relate to end-user paycheck at the end of the month to afford the type of housing you guys are proposing. So to have a balance, as you say, to, you know, accommodate all people, I think you should continue to look into that.
Absolutely. And we also would hope that people within Cloverdale will find jobs on the site as well. So they'll be commuting into the neighborhood, but hopefully not too far. And we've had a number of people reaching out asking, you know, how soon will the hotel open? How soon will the various restaurants and shops open? Who are interested in jobs. So we're seeing a lot of energy there as well.
And although we've talked prior and I heard some talk that alludes to it, but you didn't mention one thing about when and if Smart Train does show up in Cloverdale, it's going to run right through your property. What have you guys done to infrastructure around the spot?
Yeah. Well, it's funny you mention that. We were on an hour-long call with the Smart leadership today at 4:00 to 5:00 PM. We are thrilled and really hope that that extent, that last piece happens, because we think it's great for Cloverdale and it would really accelerate the development of our site. Think about it, you could get on a ferry at the ferry building, go to Larkspur, take Smart Train and do your vacation European style without getting in a car. Fantastic. What we're doing is actively coordinating with Smart. We've had multiple meetings. We're working with their legal team and their design engineering team. We have three easements right now. We're going to have an under, sub, what do they call it, a subgrade tunnel that will connect from the west part of the site, under the tracks when they're built, to the east. There'll be, up until Smart does build its tracks, we have an easement that allows at-grade crossing for emergency vehicles, hikers, bikers, cyclists, that is. And then we're also exploring preserving the drainage. There's a culvert that goes under the Smart tracks. So we're way ahead on that and really excited about that.
Appreciate that. And then, like I said, I got a million questions and we'll roll those into when you come back to council. But the one thing, you were talking about water storage and that's great. What are your plans for sustainable energy projects? Are you doing any kind of solar, any megawatts? You have plenty of property out there that you can harness the sun and be somewhat self-sustaining out there?
It's something we're very interested in and working with our civil engineers on right now. We don't have a full plan to share, but it's something that we're eagerly exploring.
Your point is very well taken. There's that, what we call the twinkie. There's a lot of land out there and it's very exposed. So it's almost perfect. And we would, of course, look at battery storage as well.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I got a million questions, but I'll move it along.
And as you know, I'm always just an email away if you have more questions.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Devin, as you know, I recently went to your town hall, which I found very educational. And I appreciate the fact that you are doing different town halls so people can ask questions. And I know there's one burning question that the public wants to ask. And so I am going to make comments after the public has a chance to ask whatever they want to ask.
Sounds good.
Good. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Devin, for coming and presenting to us today. Some great questions by our planning commission. And really, I like your questions, Councilmember Lasky. Just want to thank you two for following up on the recommendations to get in contact with the Russian River Confluence. That's kind of, I think, what's really led to the idea of the floodplain. That's a solution that is beneficial to our whole watershed. I appreciate that. Other questions?
Thank you for the introduction.
Absolutely. Other questions that I have really is, one of them, following the presentation, the 50% to 75% occupancy, kind of wondering where you got that figure from and, you know, that it doesn't correspond necessarily with the neighborhoods.
I'll be honest, we don't know. We just don't know. We're guessing right now. It's really hard for us to assess how many people will do permanent versus second homes. And by the way, there's no methodology we know of. If there was, our consultants would have found it by now.
Okay.
And as you know very well, in the United States, we can't dictate how somebody uses their home. We will be subject to the city's short-term rental ordinance. So that obviously applies, but if, I'm just going to be honest, we don't know. What we can say is, we know, Devin better than me knows, there's a lot of families that are excited about this, who've approached, actually Devin more than me, but we've, in fact, there's a, we've even formed a group that's made early, is committed early to try to put down payments on the first home. So I think we're doing our best to bring in permanent residents too, not just second home.
So some of those figures might come from talks that you've had with this prospective group. You know, there's also kind of, you can look at the figures based upon our whole city. You know, I know in my neighborhood, a lot of people do live full-time in their homes. So if this group kind of has some different ideas, it's good to share that with everyone.
And one thing we should say was that the 75% full-time was chosen as sort of a relatively conservative number, since those homes do use more services. And so we were trying to be pessimistic in the study, or Kaiser Martian, I should say, was, in terms of the fiscal impact on the city. And so that's where, that's part of where they landed on that number.
Thank you. And really, the other idea was this has come up in conversation about the proposed school. So that was kind of related as being a conceptual idea. You know, I would hope that we can maybe get some commitment, that we can get, I think, more engagement. You know, I would like to see more parents here, school board, really expressing their opinions and questions about that. You know, I just want to make sure that this is really a benefit to our local schools.
Absolutely. So when we've talked about the idea of the school with various people in the community and in the leadership, we've heard very strong opinions in both directions.
Yep.
And so while most of what we're going to be proposing in the plan that you guys will be seeing shortly, is we're going to be asking for it to be fully approved, ready to go, and we can proceed. The school is something that we are proposing, we make conditional, so that the city of Cloverdale ultimately decides whether it wants a school or not.
Okay.
And just like you, I would love to hear more people's input and feedback on that as well. And I think it would be great to continue those conversations.
I think that could be maybe something we can get an open house or town hall based around that.
And I want to go even further. The development agreement is going to make it clear that that decision has to be made by the full city council in the future.
Okay.
This is, we don't, there's so much to do, honestly, between now and March, when we come back for approvals. I don't think it's, we don't think it's realistic for the city to make a decision on that. So what we're basically saying is, that use, we're going to study it. It'll be, it's in the addendum to the EIR. We're looking at the traffic impacts, et cetera. But the DA and the zoning will say, this is not a principally permitted use. If you want to proceed with the school, you have to get a vote at city council. So we made that commitment to the mayor as well. And that's our way of saying, let the council decide when the time is right. Because honestly, because we're hearing such strong, different opinions, we decided to study it, allow it to be a possibility, but not have it pre-approved.
I think, yeah, community input would be valid, definitely beneficial. And last question, kind of following up on that, is since you guys are kind of scouting for builders and possible builders, that you consider implementing certified apprentice programs, just to keep our community thriving, that, you know, there's young people that are going to go into apprenticeships, that make sure that they have somewhere to work, make those apprenticeships work?
A couple of details. One of the, it could depend on your perspective, but because we are proposing to use the TOT rebate, the entire hotel resort property will be prevailing wage. On that note, I have a 20-year relationship with the Northern California carpenters, who arguably run the best apprentice program in all of Northern California. And so we're already talking about what the hotel resort build-out would look like and how we could partner with them.
And, you know, some of the trades do have different opinions on, you know, their apprentice programs.
On the carpenters?
You know, compared to the carpenters to the sheet metal workers, so it's good to coordinate with them and make sure they all get along, that we can kind of bring that program into the project. Thank you.
Thanks for the questions.
Devin, Michael, thank you very much for showing up. Devin, I've talked to you numerous times. Commission, thank you, guys. Kind of a bummer going last, because everybody's nailed all my questions. Thank you, guys, for that. Councilman Lasky, awesome questions. Those were right there, I'm crossing them off as fast as you're asking them. But I know, Michael, you mentioned next month, you were coming back with some more water-related stuff? Is that what you mentioned? The WSA and all that stuff? Good, I'm with Commissioner Frankston on that. I'm going to kind of reserve a lot of questions. That's a main concern for me is the water. And I think that's a main concern for Cloverdale with, you know, the Potter Valley and all that stuff going on. That is a huge item right now. And I'm going to reserve a lot of questions for when you guys come back. And hopefully, we've got a lot of the folks from town that have any questions and get them answered by coming here. I know we have a big social media community around here. I'd love for them to come down here and actually get it from the horse's mouth versus hearing it from everybody else. So I invite people to do that, but I look forward to seeing you guys in a month and going over that. And thank you very much. This is a lot of work. You guys are putting boots on the ground, but I appreciate you showing up.
Thank you.
Councilmember, we're going to try to get that draft report out, if we can, out in two weeks in advance of the hearing.
Thank you, Michael.
All right. So I only have a couple more right now, and then I'm going to probably go over the questions that we discussed that are in our report that were asked by the public. First one I have, you said there was going to be a zoning change. Can you explain that a little bit more in depth, so that everyone understands what it is?
Yeah, so the, as you may know, there's the original entitlements, they included a development agreement, a specific plan, and what they called SP1 zoning, which was custom zoning that enacted the specific plan. Since we're revising the specific plan, we're, for example, allowing a wider range of housing types than the original specific plan did. We're not, there was a lot more commercial in the original specific plan, there's going to be less commercial. So what this, we're just making sure that the zoning reflects those changes that are in the specific plan. The zoning will also basically tell planners who are reviewing projects in the site, it'll point them to the specific plan. It's like the user manual for the specific plan. It'll say, okay, you're doing, you want to review a map? You go do it, look to the specific plan, objective design standards. Are you reviewing a housing project? Look to the specific plan residential design guidelines. So it's, we're going to be adjusting it so it's, it works hand and glove with the specific plan. And we'll be giving all those, if you want to see, all the changes that will be available for you to review.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to your infrastructure finance plan, the three difference. I know the TOT, I understand that, but I'm looking forward to see what you guys propose on those three. The last question I have before I get into other questions from the public, ASR, Aqua for Recharge. We've talked a lot about it over the past year. We've talked, it's basically a new way of serving water and having extra water. Instead of doing storage tanks, you're storing it in the ground, is what that technically is. We have found through the city that your area actually has an area, geologically, that would allow that to happen more than anywhere else in Cloverdale, where it's very difficult. I know we've talked about being good partners. Is this something that you guys are still interested in, in working with us and doing things for ASR or Aqua for Recharge for our own storage unit of amount of water? And then with that, after we do that with the recycled water and purple pipe type of, tell us a little bit more about what we have planned for that.
Well, first of all, we're very excited to hear that that's something that the city is exploring. I'd heard a little bit about that and I think we should definitely have a conversation and get into the technical details. Do you want to talk to the other piece of questions?
Yeah, can I talk to Purple Pipe? So every city I've done projects in, there's always this recycled water plant that will come one day. And it's amazing that those, that one day becomes a year, becomes five years. So here's our commitment. We would be delighted to use the recycled water, particularly for irrigation, for all nonpotable uses. We would jump at the opportunity. The problem for a developer is, we can't build out an entire system if it never comes, right? And so we're going to work with the city attorney and the city manager on a reasonable agreement where we will commit to purple piping our landscape, our irrigation. But there has to be some, we have to know that the city is on its way to actually creating the plant. Otherwise, what happens is we're building a purple pipe to nowhere. And so that's all, you probably know this, that's always the problem, is that we're happy to dance, but our partner has to show up.
Yeah.
And so that's the short answer for that. But regardless, we are interested in doing stormwater capture and graywater capture. And we're going to look, the technology around graywater is getting better and better. Their membranes are getting cheaper. You can separate out all the organic compounds, so it can be reused for irrigation. So we're going to explore all that. So if the city does do the plant, fantastic. If it doesn't, we'll try to figure out our own strategy.
Next group of questions are the ones that we have in our, on the agenda that came from the public. I normally don't ask them, but because it's such a big project and we have multiple people asking the same questions, it's come up quite a bit in all of your different town halls and things you've done. I just want to make sure that I ask them and I'm going to be respectful and read them myself. And if it's something that I don't feel that you should have to ask right now, I won't ask it, but it's other things. You already know what they are, Devin, and we've been through these a million times. I just want to make sure that you know that I'm going to ask them and that you're comfortable with this.
Thanks.
First one. And these are all questions that were sent to us from the public and asked to put onto record of some sort. Normally, we just leave them on the record, but because so many people asked, and this is a huge change for Cloverdale, I want it asked in public. The first one is, is Esmeralda a network state project?
No, it is not.
Okay. Can you explain what that is, if you know what it is, with your relationship through tech and things like that, like what a network state means?
I don't know if I could give you a great definition, but my understanding is that it's a group of people on the internet who have ideas about how different places could be, and they're trying to get like autonomy of various sorts. And I think that the question's probably coming up because there was a conference that I was invited to speak at a while ago. And I get invited to speak at a lot of conferences and I say yes to many of them. And I actually didn't even attend the conference, I zoomed in and didn't meet the people there. So I'm tangentially aware of it, but I wouldn't say that we're, you know, deeply part of the movement or something.
Right. So you're not part of some network state that's trying to create a whole new government out there, correct?
No, we want to be part of Cloverdale.
Thank you.
I just have one other thing, like I always, Devin and I were talking about this. The most important thing is not what we say, it's what we do. And we are working, we're going for approvals and we're joining the city. So I would be shocked if we're unaware of any effort to secede.
And a lot of this also stems, not only from the questions that have been asked or things up until now, there was also a new news article that came out in Sacramento that mentioned this whole project. And that's, I think, where a lot of this stems from. I read it today and a lot of these questions mirror what was said in that. So that's where I see a lot of it as well. Give me a second, I'm just going to read these before I actually read them out loud. You just answered, this next question is, does the project's plan to seek autonomy? The answer is no.
Nope.
Is there any special economic zoning that you were looking for that affects just you?
No. I mean, I guess, I guess technically...
I don't know what economic zoning means, but...
I don't either, and I think that we've answered that with the EIFD and the CFD.
I was about to say, just...
Those are not specific for you, but that is something in a development agreement that we would go through.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing a classic development agreement that uses an infrastructure finance[1778.26] finance plan. I've never heard that called economic zoning, though.
Which is California wide, yeah.
Yeah, I know the project you're referring to, and it's not, nothing like that, they were basically trying to start a new country. And I don't think that that's gonna work out here, and I don't think we're gonna even try.
All right. Yes, the next three questions are all about investors, and I don't feel it's my place to ask who your investors are at this point. I don't think that's something that you have to answer, you can if you'd like to talk about that, but I'm not gonna ask you specific names that are listed in the question.
For the specific names, I am happy to speak to three different rumors that I've heard. Two, I think are, I think there was Balaji Srinivasan and Pronimos Capital on there, and I've also heard people ask questions about Peter Thiel, and I can definitively say that none of the three of those people slash groups are our investors. And that's, yeah, they're not our investors. So it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. And thank you for being so candid. The next set, I'm gonna open it up to the public, are you, are you guys good for right now, Planning Commission? Okay. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open up to the public, I'm gonna have someone come around with a microphone. You wanna listen to all the questions, then answer them as a whole, or do you wanna answer them one by one?
I guess, one by one.
Okay. So our city clerk is going to bring it up. Anyone that wants to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and we'll work our way through. What I will ask is that if you can give your name for the record, so that we don't have to try to write it all down, we can come back and watch.
Hi, my name is Sally Pringle, and I'm just curious, this is the first that I've really heard, I mean, I've heard about Esmeralda, but of course, this is the first that I've seen. And just in looking at what you're presenting, I have questions about the sediment in the Twinkie section, getting into the river, and being that the Potter Valley Dam project has been decommissioned, it's changing the last hundred years of what has been happening with the river, and I'm concerned about what happened in Texas and whether or not, like, the river in the winter when we have big storms is gonna come in and just like wash all the school and the children and the people away. And how is that gonna be dealt with? And then I also was wondering, if you do detour the river into that Twinkie section, how is it gonna affect the Koho salmon that are traveling up, that haven't been able to do that in the last hundred years? So...
Excellent questions, thank you, and thank you for coming. First, I should, I just wanna clarify, we don't plan on diverting the river, the river channel will stay in the same place, we're beautiful as it is, and we don't wanna touch it. What we wanna do is sort of go back to the way that our site was, which it used to be a floodplain before people piled a bunch of dirt on it, and we'd like the, when it does flood, for it to come back in, and that will actually help with salmon spawning, spawning. So when we talk about habitat restoration, salmon is really high on our list of species that we'd like to support, and, and we plan to. You also asked about schools washing away, or, you know, other buildings in the town, and one thing that isn't really clear from the site map, but we have a beautiful topo map that shows the topology of the site, is the area that's closest to the river, where we're planning to build the park, is quite low, that's why it makes for a natural floodplain, when there's no Twinkie there. But then where we're planning to build all of the residences and the hotel and the potential school and other uses, that's all up on a hill and really quite elevated from the river. It would have to be a hell of a flood for it to affect any of those buildings, and that's part of how we're placing those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And absolutely, and we're way, way, way above the hundred year floodplain, like hundreds of feet.
Okay. And then also, the other thing that I was worried about is that the wine country is struggling, and they're having a really hard time, and I know that your project might help that, but it also might fail because of that, so...
Actually, I don't know, there was another part of your question that I do wanna respond to, too, 'cause other people might wanna, Potter Valley decommissioning, which I encourage you, if you're interested in the water stuff, come next month when we're presenting the water supply assessment, we're doing, we have an exhaustive report looking into all these things, including the, as you guys know, climate change is causing more severe droughts and more wet, wet years. So this report goes deep, and we have hydrogeologists and specialists who have done literally ninety to a hundred pages of work on this topic. But the headline I wanna let you know, and you probably already know it because you're reading the news, the P G N E has filed to decommission, they haven't actually decommissioned it yet. Second, there's a group of local agencies, and I think Cloverdale might even be a part of this, that's interested in seeing if there's a middle path where they could take it over from P G N E and, and allow some water. So first of all, what's the word? Humpty Dumpty hasn't fallen yet, right? So he may, but, and then furthermore, the study we've done assumes that he falls. And, and so we are, we're anticipating the worst. And one more word on that, you probably know this already if you've been following it, but that water goes to Lake Mendocino, and what it means is that water won't go to Lake Mendocino, it means that Lake Mendocino won't be released as frequently, so that the summer and early fall, the river will be a little lower, and if not, in some cases, may not be there at all. One other point that's in our study, I'm doing a preview, but it's, is that the alluvial aquifer is still flowing. So even though you don't, the alluvial aquifer, the river's aquifer that flows below, it's still there below the soil, and the good news is the city draws from that, it doesn't draw literally from the river directly. Yeah.
Good questions, thank you.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Rachel Rodriguez, resident of Cloverdale. I read recently something about possibly putting outposts of like Dahlia and Sage and, what was the other one? Plank, in, into your development, into your piazza kind of area. What incentives do people have that live in your development have to come to Cloverdale? Because the, that's great, you know, to, to bring some local businesses over there, but what's gonna bring your people that are buying these houses down into Cloverdale? What's gonna stop them from, what's gonna keep the downtown here alive? Because I have been here now almost seven years, when we moved here, it felt like Cloverdale was really kinda on the cusp of something good. I'm talking Cloverdale proper downtown. Pandemic hit, things happened, the economy, we've, we've watched a lot of stuff happen in our downtown, it's not thriving the way it should. How does your development help that happen?
Great question, thank you for asking, and we actually have some slides about that that I'll go to in a moment, too. But first and foremost, I think creating more places for people to stay when they are in Cloverdale will bring more foot traffic to downtown as well, in general. Really, like, we see it as growing the pie for everybody, if there's more people up at the north end of the county, there's gonna be more people walking in downtown. Will every single person who goes to the hotel come to downtown? Maybe not, but probably, probably the majority of them will, you only wanna stay in your hotel room for so long. And one of the reasons that we were so excited when some of the local businesses reached out to us saying they'd love to have outposts in the development, is it's a, it's a way to link into downtown and say, oh, you know that sandwich that you grabbed at the front of the hotel that, that said Dahlia and Sage on it? Well, if you need all your groceries, you can go down and, and go into, into town and grab that. So that's one piece of what we like, and should I walk through the...
It's great. Yeah. Well, Devin's pulling up, so we have, there's two, there's a couple strategies, one is physical. This site is isolated, you guys know that, have, have you ever tried to walk across the one-on-one overpass? It's not pleasant, and then it puts you in South Cloverdale. So one of the things that we've committed to are the physical, we, we think we shouldn't, we can enhance the physical connections, so it's easier. So one of those is we're building a two-way separated Class One bike path along Asti, Citrus Fair to downtown. So we're gonna be inviting a lot of wellness and bike enthusiasts to this hotel, we want them to literally drag that path to downtown. Two, we've already contacted Sonoma County Transit, and they're apparently very supportive of extending the sixty-eight free shuttle into the heart of the project, so you could, as a person at the hotel, pick up the bus and go downtown for free. And so I just wanted to emphasize, we're trying to do as much physical connection as we can. That doesn't guarantee it, but at least it lowers the friction, you know, it improves the probability.
And some of the improvements that Michael mentioned are shown up here, the, so here's how the, the car access will work, there will be multiple entrances into the site, but we, we want everyone to come into this, this is not a gated community, we want this to be a lively place where people feel really welcome, even if they don't live in the neighborhood. Here's the, the map of the shuttle, and if you can see the, the solid blue line, that's the, the end of the current line, and it would actually be a very short extension to get it into the site. And as Michael mentioned, we've spoken with Sonoma County Transit, and they're interested in doing this. And then here's the, the bike and pedestrian access that we're proposing, and the, the green line is a separated bike lane that we'd be paying for, that would go along Asti, and I've biked on Asti many times, it's, it's really wide and actually feels okay, but people go pretty fast there. And so we'd like to separate that, paint it green and make it really safe for everybody. And actually, if you could go back real quick, the, oops, a little forward, the one with the, this one. There we go, thank you. Then the yellow line is the, the Great Redwood Trail, which includes the Smart Path, and then also having trails all within sight. But I think the, we're giving you a lot of different answers here, but we are still figuring out what the full answer to that question is, and we've been brainstorming with Cloverdalian's, and it's one of the reasons why we've hosted so many public events, is we'd like to continue having conversations about how to knit this together, 'cause I do think that one of the challenges with this site is that it, it's separated by the freeway to most of the rest of town. And so finding a way to tie them together and make them feel like one, one piece, and draw people into downtown and, and draw Cloverdalian's and wel, welcome them into this neighborhood is really important to us. So we'd love to hear your ideas.
If I go a step further, we're not providing a full-service grocery store, so people will have to go, we hope, well, there's other grocery stores, but we have particular affinity for Dahlia and Sage, we think they're fantastic, and we're not gonna be providing a drugstore, for example. Like, so there's a lot of uses that people will literally have to go into town. And then finally, our, or, that's true, yeah, no, that's true, and as you know, we don't, we can't put little collars on their legs, but, 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 but I, I think the carrot is the point, we're trying to develop carrots, and, and if you are passionate about this, we would love to try to work with you on it, yeah.
What, sorry, it's a couple miles long. There is a disconnect in, that I have met people that have lived in Cloverdale, like in the Dell Web Development, that you'll say, oh, I went to Aaron Mavis, or I went over here, or I went to the Beat. Oh, where's that? There, it's, it's just shocking to me how little some people know of what exists in downtown Cloverdale. There are people that commute, that they get off at the south exit, they stay south. There's people that come down from the north, they get off at that exit, they stay north. There has to be a bridge in between, just that, and now we're saying, not only do we need to bridge that, we need to bridge to Esmeralda also. We haven't been able to bridge the first one, I'm curious as to how we can bridge the second.
So can I respond just a little bit to that? Another step that Cloverdale has taken, I, I've been working with U C Berkeley and Smart to design the downtown and, and the transportation paths to make it more walkable and more inviting, and show how to get people into certain areas. And U C Berkeley has about a dozen master's students in their engineering program that are designing this for me right now, and the program that they're designing includes this development and includes Smart both coming to Cloverdale. And so whatever they come to propose will include all these as possibilities, and trying to basically bridge that gap that you're talking about. And I was going to ask you to talk about the number of stores you had, and how it could have been more, but you went less to pull people in, but you already kinda did, so thank you.
Okay. Great.
This is gonna be a group participation, City Manager Thompson, is it safe to say that our population has been stagnant at like right around nine thousand for fifteen to twenty years, right?
Probably the last five years, just like kind of the trends in California has been, I mean, I think it's starting to pick up a little bit, but it's been pretty flat, I mean, and that's if you go off, you know, the census numbers or the Department of Finance numbers, yeah.
Commissioner AC, you went to one of our meetings, that there is like a magic number to entice businesses to come in, like we're always saying, oh, we wish we had a Trader Joe's or a Boll and Molly, and, what was that number?
It's based on, it's based by brands, so certain brands will follow another brand, so if one brand goes into one location, other brands follow them, but those brands who usually are the, the trailblazers follow a standard of twelve plus per community to try to, twelve thousand residents in order to establish where they think is a good baseline for them to put their business in that town.
So in theory, then, with the growth, I don't, what's the projected growth of the development?
At full buildout, we would anticipate about a thousand six hundred people, but we can't control the household size, but that's the, the target.
Would you say then that this would, if, if you don't wanna put it stagnant for so long, that this would definitely push us into that direction that we go to get those things, everybody's...
Well, I'll layer one thing on before you answer, just adding a resort can entice one of those, so that twelve thousand dollar, that twelve thousand person limit could change just by having a good-sized resort, and they might immediately just draw to the area because of that. We could see businesses coming into the downtown, the south of the town, just because we added a resort this size.
It's two things, it's the number of residents and the average income, and they look at the purchasing power, so that's something we can help with. And for the Planning Commission also, we have, right now, I have a developer who's come and started kicking tires about another, like Little Strip Mall, another hotel, I mean, they're really looking, this is progressing, other areas in our town are really progressing, two different housing developments have started kicking the tires, there's a, there's a lot, so, you know, everything drives off of each other, and so you're looking for your twelve thousand, you might get it pretty quick if we're not careful. And once again, I'm gonna continue to let people talk freely and not time you, as long as we can be respectful for everyone else, and I kinda like it like this, for this dialogue, and I, as long as you're okay with it. The next person, I think, up here, Ms. Cordova, that's you.
Angela Cordova. I don't really, I, the way I look at your project right now is it's kind of a facade, putting up a smokescreen, because I received a list of network state connections that involve you. You were a speaker at their conference in September, you presented Edge Esmeralda Partner 2025 Network State Conference, Framed Project as Network State Effort, you visited Prospera Honduras 2021, you also wrote a forty-two page report on Prospera analyzing how to start a network state city, you had a joint podcast with California Forever CEO, public booster of the project, Edge Esmeralda Pop-Up Village in June twenty-four, you hosted Nate's Network State Figure, Patree Friedman, you led the Crypto Networks and Cities Panel in 2018, and you just sat up here and told our council and our community, you acted like you had no idea what network state was, but this list goes on and on, and I'm not gonna bore people with the list, 'cause I'll post it later, but you have all these connections, so are you putting up this smokescreen and facade in our small community thinking they're just a bunch of lames that aren't gonna catch on and, and make this whole proposal look so good? And then in the long run, turn around and, and pull a fast one and make your little community what you want it to be? And what is your background with real estate and development? 'Cause I don't think you have one, I think you're the forefront for those that do, and I wanna know why you keep your investors' names and involvement so secretive.
Thank you for your question. No, I deeply respect Cloverdale, that's why I've been spending so much time here the last few years, and I love this town, I really do, I have come to make many good friends here, so I absolutely don't see people that way. Many of the things that you mentioned, I think, I don't think I would consider most of those network state. It is true, as I mentioned before, that I did speak at the Network State Conference last September, and I did not attend, I was invited to speak, so I, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, I was pretty transparent about that. For the...
For the Prospera project that you mentioned, I did go and visit, that is true. Um, I'm fascinated by a lot of the infrastructure that they're putting in. And, um, in particular, they're doing off-the-grid, um, tech, technology of different sorts because Honduras doesn't have very stable infrastructure. And so I was very fascinated by that. And most of that report that you referred to, um, goes into detail about how their, their sewage systems work and different details like that, which I learned a lot from. So I'm sorry that you see it that way and I have been transparent. Pardon me, what, what is known?
We need, we need you to talk on the microphone. We have online, thank you.
You can hear me. You bold-faced lied about your involvement with these lists, with these conferences, with these reports. You're lying straight to my face and every single person in this room. This is not a lie. You can go to the next speaker. You don't even have to answer. Do not spill lies. Thank you.
I am not lying.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am, please.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Black. Ms. Cordova is a tough act to follow, so I won't even try. Um, my, I'm, I have deep roots in Cloverdale. I am fifth generation Cloverdale and my property was pictured in the flood photograph. So I have a ton of questions as well. I think Mr. Lasky did a great job of asking the questions that you asked. And I am going to go to the meeting next month because I have lots of questions about the water stuff. So, um, again, after that, and I, I actually do share her concerns based on what I've read publicly about Esmeralda and yourself and, um, investors and all of that. I have lots of concerns, but my questions today are just tiny little small picture questions. One of them is, where are the people who are going to enjoy this river park going to park? And please don't say they're going to bicycle in.
No, there's a parking lot.
There is a, why isn't it?
Going to be a parking lot right next to the park and there's going to be public access. Let's see, uh, oh, there we go. If you see on the bottom left there.
Okay.
That white box that's shown, that's where we're.
60 spaces is what we're currently planning with.
60, okay. And where are these, where on your map are those ponds that you were talking about that are going to help you save water?
If you go to the master plan map.
Oh, there it was.
No, actually, you, sorry. Easier if we control typically, but okay. Oh, just back a little more. Oh, uh, sorry, the back, we're almost there. Sorry.
The river.
Yeah. Oh, it froze, okay. Okay, keep going, keep going. There we go, pause. So the largest, there's a couple, you can see those pale blue, there's one, the big squirrel, there's look, uh, sorry, no, no, that, right there. That, oop, right there. That's the largest stormwater capture lake pond, really. And then there's two other small, but, but yeah, those right there.
Really pretty faint, alright.
Yeah. And by the way, uh, when we submit our tentative map, that will have all the detailed engineering, right? These are, this still is a concept plan. And, um, one of the things we want to do with those is we'd like them to be attractive year-round. If you know, unfortunately, the problem with stormwater ponds is they often, um, in the dry season are empty and people don't like staring at, um, muddy pits. So we're going to also try to see if we can store some water to recirculate so they can be year-round ponds.
Okay. My other question is, this is, does it, do you get, if this happens, this is City of Cloverdale property?
No, um, the, everything you see here is private right now. But what we're proposing is to dedicate that entire eastern side, the east of the tracks and to become a permanent public park.
No, 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 no. My question has to do with police and fire. What's the plan? It, will it be served by Cloverdale Police and Cloverdale Fire?
Served by Cloverdale Police and Fire.
And what's the plan for, uh, who's going to pay for the increased?
For all of that. We're paying impact fees, we're building all the infrastructure, putting all the hydrants. And if you saw that fiscal impact report, even after accounting for all those expenses, the city will be running a net surplus.
So the city is expected to hire additional police and fire out of the profit that they're allegedly going to make?
It's not profit, it's called property taxes, yeah.
Well, okay. I mean, it's money that we don't have now.
But it's, but it's not profit, it's, it's annual property tax.
So you won't, there's not, you, you're not going to be paying, you're going to be, alright, I get it, okay. Um, because I would think that.
Ma'am, I just also wanted to add, in addition to that annual property tax, which is significant, we're going to be investing about $77.5 million combined infrastructure plus impact fees. Like, for example, we have millions of dollars of school fees. We're going to be contributing to the fire department and the police department at the beginning of the project.
That's a one-time, that's 77 million?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, alright. Cause actually, as Sea Ranch knows, when you have homes that are vacation homes, they're actually, I mean, they're less in terms of they're not turning on the faucet, but they're getting burglarized.
Exactly.
So I, I would think.
And if, if you were here earlier for that fiscal impact study, we assumed conservatively, as in we overestimated the demand on city services.
Okay.
So those numbers we are showing you were arguably understating the fiscal impact.
Okay, alright, thank you.
My name is Nancy Brown from Cloverdale. I just want to ask if you're familiar with the Stanley Ranch development in Napa? That after three years, very kind of similar.
Bankrupt. Went bankrupt, yeah.
Yeah, three years. Luxury homes, villas, restaurants, spa, winery, you know, an auberge, very high-end, three years and they're in foreclosure. So it feels like there are so many wonderful things that you all are proposing, but some things feel like.
Risky.
Huh?
They're risky.
Yeah, well, the density here, I mean, it feels like the fabric of Cloverdale is going to change. It's like a community within a community here. So, I mean, it just, yeah, it is risky. So why, why is this going to succeed when this didn't, a very similar project?
So first of all, I really appreciate, it's rare, sometimes you're in these forums and people think we just are like printing money. And the reality is, as you, the project you indicated, shows you the risk we have to address. So the reason we're doing so much upfront work and all these studies and doing intensive, we're testing the site, we're doing the geologic tests, we're doing environmental soil tests, we're doing extensive infrastructure pricing and design because we don't want to end up like Stanley Ranch. And the only answer is, the reason, you know, real estate's challenging is you're dealing with an environment, national economic environment. We don't control that. Um, hard costs, construction costs are climbing, you probably know this, tariffs and the job market, there's, there's no construction workers. So we have a lot of risks we're trying to manage. We actually believe this site is exceptional. And we're going to do our best to raise the capital to make it happen. Anyone who promises though, you know, we, do we know 100% in the end how it'll work out? Of course, you know, we, we can't tell you 100%.
Right, but once, once the ball starts rolling, Cloverdale will be changed forever.
Well, yeah, change is that way, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's going to change. I mean, development is going to happen and it needs to be something that, it complements the city. And that it's the reason we are all here is because we love it, not just because we picked a site, so.
Absolutely. And the reason why we're doing this in Cloverdale is because we love Cloverdale. Um, I originally, so I grew up in the South Bay, uh, in Mountain View. And my little brother has special needs. And I, I originally came to Cloverdale because my family has been looking for a place for him to live long-term as my parents age. And we learned of Clearwater Ranch with, which some of you might be familiar with here in Cloverdale. Um, and that's what first brought me up here. And I realized how special it was through that experience. And that is how I decided to proceed with this site and pulled together a whole team to, to make this happen since then. And so, well, we're, we're in Cloverdale because we want to build on what Cloverdale has, not to have something separate, um, not to replace what it's got, but just build on it and, and make it the best that it can be.
I'm Susie Cummings and I live in the Clover Springs Dell Web Community, which I think a lot of people in Cloverdale thought that it was a community within a community. But there is a lot of integration into Cloverdale from Clover Springs. But my question for you, and this is something we've had to struggle with, is maintaining all the beautiful things that you're showing there. And I, I think I heard you say that you were going to, that there would be a, a community services district formed to maintain. So that would be taxing the people especially who bought property there to maintain all the, the parkways and the, the trails and, and all these things that take money. Because that's one thing that didn't happen with our community. And so there are some things that, um, we struggle to, um, generate enough income to, to maintain. So as, including open space. So I'm, I'm curious about how that, how does that work? Is that part of the agreement that you make with the city or is it voted on? And the other, and one other question I have, is this going to be a self-governing community based on the Davis Sterling HOA types of, um, laws? Uh, that might be something that would assuage people's worries about a corporate ownership or a corporate governance. If it's, uh, the, the community itself that's governing it, then, you know, it's hard to argue with that.
Yeah, thank you for your question. Uh, we are proposing, it's called a Communities Facilities District, CFD. But we're proposing that however, to pay for most of the capital. Um, because the infrastructure that we're building is immensely expensive. But what we are proposing is a Davis Sterling Master HOA. And not only would all the residents who buy homes there contribute and pay into it and help govern it, but also the commercial properties, including the hotel. So the hotel would be a contributor to the Master HOA, all the commercial and all the residential. And you may know, if you know that law, at, at a certain point, when the certain home sales and private property is sold, the, the, the control of the Master HOA is no longer the developers, it goes over to the people that live there. And then finally, I think your last question was, would this be addressed in the agreement with the city? And the answer is yes. Um, and the development agreement will be, will be obligated to maintain, for example, all the public streets we're building. We're going to dedicate them to the City of Cloverdale as rights, as public right-of-way. But we're going to be maintaining, we being the Master HOA, will be maintaining them. And you're absolutely right, one more thing, we have to get that, we have to get that estimate, um, the maintenance and operations estimate right. A lot of, a lot of communities don't, they're afraid to, to, to be real with the cost, it's expensive.
The ongoing cost is what I'm thinking about. Not just the impact fees at the beginning, but down 20 years down the way, you know, that there's still, um, some form of, uh, that people are paying into to maintain things so that it's not, um, just, you know. And to me, that's actually okay, that the developer leaves and leaves it to the community to, to run. I think that's okay.
Totally. And, and something to add to that, two pieces is, we're, not only is it the right thing to do to make sure that that's aligned long-term, but it's also in our own self-interest. So, you know, we'll, we'll be, we plan to be selling the homes over the course of those 11 years. And that's, that's quite a ways into the future. And also the hotel itself, that hotel is not going to be able to charge the room rates that it wants if the park nearby is not nicely maintained, if the streets getting to the hotel have potholes. Um, and so we're, we are very motivated to make sure that this is a sustainable community long-term fiscally. Um, and, uh, not just sort of a, you know, uh, grab and go type of thing.
Right. And I have one more, I think this is what Suzanne was asking. Is this area within the city limits? That's what I.
Yes, it is within the city limits. It was annexed well over 10 years ago.
We are not an autonomous community.
At the last public meeting that was at the Vet Hall, I mentioned that on the Esmeralda website, there was a picture displayed on the website of two major captains of industry in our near past. Thomas Edison and Henry Ford, which are two major races and anti-Semites in our past. Visit that site again today, you haven't taken that picture down. I'd like you to, uh, explain why you thought it necessary to provide that picture on your Esmeralda website.
Thank you for the question. So for some context, for those of you who haven't read the website or perhaps not attended some of our prior events, one of the great inspirations for what we're trying to do is this town called Chautauqua in Western New York. And it's the town where my grandmother lives. Um, I visited Chautauqua every summer growing up and I would spend a lot of time there with grandma. And something that makes Chautauqua really special is it's this really lovely small town of about 8,000 people. But then every summer for nine weeks, it hosts lectures and workshops and talks. And it's been around for about 150 years. Um, you can kind of think about it like a liberal arts college campus, but it's multi-generational. And some of the events that we've talked about, um, are really inspired by that Chautauqua model. And both Henry Ford and Thomas Edison summered there with their families. They're people who did push, uh, American industry forward, as you said. And, uh, that, we're trying to show the historical significance of the Chautauqua, uh, the Chautauqua story. And we're certainly not putting it up there to celebrate, um, their, their less savory views. Um, and we'll definitely consider taking that down. Thank you for the feedback.
Alright, not seeing any more questions. I wanted to make sure everyone was heard and felt that way that we got it all out here right now. We'll bring it back. Planning Commission, after all of that, if you want to, we'll run through everyone and see if there's any more questions.
Go ahead, comment, whatever it just makes you.
Comments? Uh, I really appreciate your project. My background is in resort development. I know what it can do to help a town, not, uh, really take apart a town, but really support the town. I, I know recently we've made some decisions that have cut our, uh, reserves in half. And I think that this, your annual amount would actually be larger than our reserves. So that opportunity's there. I appreciate your approach for trying to include the town. I too am concerned about losing the downtown feel, um, with the Baumgartner project and other projects in the south end of town, we're becoming south-heavy. And so to really, uh, keep that connection to the downtown corridor is really important. And that resort can really drive daily activity to our downtown, to our downtown businesses without adding population to our town. Really the nightly, uh, amount for a 200-room resort. And, and I also love that you're doing a resort style. Um, it's not a hotel, it's, it's a resort which is a, a, a multi-facility, um, that's spread out through the landscape. So it actually screens better. I appreciate the screening that you've done in this project as well. I, I, I think that it's really well-placed and that it's going to be focusing to the east when normally we are always looking to the west and our west hills. So this is kind of a, a unique way of seeing that, that view. And lastly, I, I really truly appreciate you, uh, building an, an open space and park for our city and gifting it to the city, but gifting it in a way where you're actually planning on doing the maintenance for those. Of course, it's going to benefit the resort, but you're adding revenue to our, uh, through taxes to our community without adding expenses. And that in itself is better than any developer has brought projects to us in the past. And we've seen a few come through here with odd and fun, uh, interesting plans. This one is promoting more open space, less exposure and less, uh, impact on our community, but yet more unification for our community. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Heelsburg went through a, yeah. Heelsburg went through a serious development plan, um, several years ago. And I think one of the big draws to Heelsburg is the retail that's there now. The, the different tasting rooms, but also the clothing stores and the knick-knack stores and all that stuff that they have in Heelsburg that we don't have. I wonder if some thought should be given to the development of Cloverdale's downtown to try and keep. to try and keep people here as opposed to having them hop on the freeway and 11 miles down the road, or 15 miles down the road, go and spend their money in Hillsburg.
Jason.
I would like to say that I appreciate a project with no low-income housing. As you mentioned before, I don't think a lot of people in the community understand the way the California laws are built right now, and that we do have a lot of low income because we are unable to say no to low income, and it has been burdensome, burdensome on us. And we really need a lot of market-rate houses, so I really appreciate that that is not included at this time, and hope that it stays that way.
Anyone else? All right, we'll bring it back to the, bring it back to the council. Go ahead. Morgan's turn.
I just want to say, and I think, you know, you're doing town halls because you want people's input, but, and I know that your investors, you don't have to name them, but I just want to make a suggestion, that if there was some investors that wanted to come forward, the transparency would probably help a lot more people get on board with it. But I think people are hesitant because they don't know who the investors are, and they've seen things happen other places. And so that's just my suggestion.
Thank you for the suggestion. That does make a lot of sense, and I understand why people are curious. I can share a little bit of color about the types of people who our investors are. It's actually something that we're really proud of, and I'm very happy to talk to them to see if they'd be willing to share, even a few of them, as you say. But as a broad strokes, typical large real estate projects will have one, two, maybe three really big investors, typically large institutions who probably have nothing to do with the place, and they're, they just see it as an investment to make money. You know, it's good to have housing and things need to get built, but that's a typical way that things get done. Our project already has 19 different investors. Most of them are families who live throughout the Bay Area and who really love this, this region and want to see a better pattern of development happen here. Many of them are people who want to raise their families in the Bay Area, and they've, some of them are people who lived in places that were right on a train line and had a walkable little, little area, and they don't, they look around in northern California, and there's only a handful of options, and they're really expensive. And so they have invested in this project because they would love to see more places like that be built. Some of them even intend to live there once it is built. So our investor base is much more democratic, and many of our investors even put in smaller checks than you would normally expect in a real estate project like this. And it's also part of why they care about their privacy, because they are private individuals for the most part who just want to see this happen. But as you suggested, I will talk to them, and if they're comfortable with it, like, it's not my place to share their identity, but if they are comfortable, it's something we would definitely consider.
I think it would only help more people get on board if, you know, if they found out who some of the investors were and felt comfortable, then it would be like, you know, a barricade would come down.
Totally. Thank you.
All right. Oh, so there's three ways for a town to grow its revenue, really. Its major growth, which Chair Spingler alluded to, in the 90s through mid, early 2000s, we tripled in size here in Cloverdale by the housing, housing that we put in. Ferber's, the Del Webb, all of that came in in that same period of time between like 94 till about 2012 is when all that really happened. 2009, I think, actually, sorry. If people don't want Cloverdale to grow really large, then you have to go into tourism, bringing the money. If you don't want to be Hillsburg, then you have to pay it out of every one of your people's pockets to put the money in. This plan is a little bit of each, a little bit of tourism, a little bit of growth, and a little bit out of our pockets. But it also puts money into our pockets. It gives us more jobs, which in our community, we are, we talked about the housings that we have here, are below-market, is wholly different than the rest of the state. No one believed us when we said that we had ample low-income housing here. They said your numbers are off. Even the state said so, to show that we actually have to have high-income housing in Cloverdale when everyone else has to have low income, and it's, and you do that to offset. So like some of your affordable housing units, they actually are deficit on our budget. One of them that was recently put in, when it first started, came in at $75,000 negative on Cloverdale. So you have to have higher-end homes that pay more money, or, and have the people that come in and spend money to actually compensate for that. So when I look at this, this actually will do a huge benefit to Cloverdale to bring us, so the numbers that everyone else has be equal to be able to break even, basically, with your numbers, without having to grow into Hillsburg, which, sorry, this mayor does not want us to be a huge tourist attraction. I want us to have enough to get by in our little hidden secret so that we can keep our little town the way it is and have a great community. I do not want to bring in here 5,000 to 10,000 more people. I do not want this to sprawl all over. We have parks, we are building an open space surrounding Cloverdale to keep us in this little bowl so that we can't sprawl, and all we can do is enjoy our space up there. So you, I think, personally, I think that you guys fit in very well to bring just enough of everything. And the greatest part is most of your people will give us their money and go away. They will come on a Friday, they will leave on a Sunday, and what do they leave behind? Cash, revenue, things for us to benefit from. The water system, we're going to be turning to you like we've been talking about since the day you walked in the door. We're going to be short on water in the near future, possibly, and we're going to have to be good partners to make sure that we are not. We know that the water's there, but that doesn't matter without the ability to take it. And so the storage and recharge is the way to go, and having you guys as good partners in that is going to actually help us, hopefully, in the long run. I'm going to turn to my student council liaison before she walks out the door because it is a school night. I want to know your thoughts on this as, as what I would call one of our younger leaders in Cloverdale. What do you think about Cloverdale now and Cloverdale with growth of about 10%? What are your ideas here and what are your thoughts?
I think this would be a good for kids, for kids to get more bonding and see something new in Cloverdale. And, yeah.
So, so, yeah, it was hard. So she was basically saying that she thinks it'd be good for the kids because it'd bring more money for the kids in our, in our school district and in our town, and bring more opportunities for them. That is also something that, if you look at it for students in California, they get money based off of property taxes and things like that. And so this will raise that number. Right now, we get bare minimum. Places like Hillsburg get double the amount per student in their school district than Cloverdale. And so this will actually aid the students in a huge way to bring in higher-end homes because it will bring more property tax money, more funds to each student in the district. So, thank you for that. Any questions? No?
No questions.
All right. I'm going to go through the Planning Commission one more time, then I'm going to go through the, one more time, and if there's no one else, we'll be done with this one.
Oh, I just want to say thank you because I said that the low-income housing is burdensome, and by that I meant financially burdensome. Low-income housing is extremely important, and we need low-income housing. I meant it is that, you know, it doesn't bring in a lot of revenue, and then we have to build a lot of infrastructure to tie into it that comes out of the city's pocket, so that's what I meant. I didn't mean by low income itself as burdensome, so thank you for clarifying that.
City leaders have to look at this as a business as well.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what some of the public had commented about, as well as council member Morganstein and the investors. And in speaking of people, that's been a significant concern that people have had. From my perspective, the three biggest problems are water, who you guys are, and what's it going to do to Cloverdale. And you're certainly under no obligation to disclose. Devin, I appreciate your talking about investors coming forward. I'd heard that in October as well, or earlier in this year. And obviously, the decision is upon them. But what I would say is that I would hope the city council, one of the most important parts is, as was indicated, you guys have what it takes to get the job done, and that's the financing. And so I don't necessarily need to know whose money it is, but I need to know that the money is there. And I think by investors coming forward, hopefully investors with money, that would satisfy not only my concern and the city council's concern, but also the public's. Thank you.
Anyone else on council, or on the Planning Commission? All right, seeing none.
Again, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Devin, and thanks to the community for showing up. This is what's absolutely needed, just to have a positive conversation. Your voice matters, and this is how things can go our way, by engaging in this positive conversation. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything else, final words?
Thank you so much for having us. I know we've been coming and talking at you a lot recently, but hopefully, each time, you're learning more and more about what we're going to propose, so that when the package lands in your inbox, it all makes sense, because it's going to be, it's going to be a lot to go through. So thank you for your time and for helping us get set up with the presentation, and thanks for the Planning Commission for coming out as well.
All right. Thank you to everyone in the public for taking part. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 8:25. Thank you. All right, we're going to call a meeting back to order at 8:27. Going forward on the calendar to F, the Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does the council have any items they would like to pull? Seeing none, does there anyone in the audience who'd like to pull any of the items on the Consent Calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Like to move to approve the Consent Calendar?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Passes 5-0. Thank you. We're going to move into G, Public Hearings. G1, Consider Adopting a Resolution to Approve a Modification to a Previously Approved Design Review and Conditional Use Permit for the Construction of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Wellness Center on the 2.8-acre project site at 321 South Cloverdale Boulevard, and Introducing for First Reading an Ordinance Approving a Development Agreement with Copper Tower Family Medical Center pertaining to the Development of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Wellness Center.
That's the whole report.
Yeah. That was the ordinance, that was the resolution. That was the ordinance, that was the resolution.
Good motion. Mayor, council members, as the mayor indicated, this is, the project has been approved already, but this is a modification to the project, scaling it back from about 47,000 square feet to about 27,000. Planning commission did review what's being proposed tonight on August 20, or, excuse me, August 5th, and recommended approval for the council. So, they took a, kind of a deeper dive into the, the design of it. They were looking at the design, the site layout, things like that. As your, as the, the way our code is written, you will be also approving the design, but we're going to probably focus a little bit more on the development agreement, although the architect is out on Zoom, who's going to give us just a quick rundown in a minute about what the, what the design is. This is the First Amendment. Probably one of the biggest things you'll see in there is the city's commitment of some financing to complete Washington Street and for some storm drain improvements as well. The original approval in, I think it was about 2021, maybe, did commit the city to helping financially complete Washington Street, and that was going to be accomplished through a traffic study at the time, which kind of divvied out the number of cars that would be going onto the site and kind of used that as a formula to decide who was going to pay for what. Since that time, they've reduced the size of their project, so the number of trips was, is reduced. And that, that study did assume that the city was going to build a police station there. So, long story short, we did kind of come to an agreement in, in practice of how we were going to split the cost, but we never got there due to the changing conditions on the ground. This proposal is for us to use, so, let me back up just for one second. At that time, we did dedicate, commit $250,000 for storm drain improvements, which is going to help the school, the site, citrus fair, and that was paid for through the American Recoveries Act Fund, and that's still sitting in a, in a fund. And part of the Recovery Act was to help nonprofits and to get the money into the community. That's been in the development agreement all along. The addition to that is now is a $1.25 million, and this is coming, proposed to come from our low moderate housing fund. So, the theory here is the purch, the site was purchased with former redevelopment money, which is from a long time ago, and it was purchased for the development of affordable housing. Since we sold the site to Alexander Valley, we, we took that money and we kept it in a, kind of an account with a right of reverter, which meant that if they didn't proceed with the project, we would then purchase the site back for the same price that they purchased it. Now, we're very confident that they are going to be moving forward, so we're proposing to use that money for the improvement of the site. The way this benefits the city is they're going to be putting in Washington Street from Healsburg Avenue to Citrus Fair in front of the parcel that is remaining, so the city does still remain the owner of a parcel south of the Alexander Valley Resort, and that's potentially where the police station could go, or affordable housing, or whatever we want to do with it. By us committing this funding to that, we're going to get curb, gutter, sidewalk, frontage improvements on our lot, increasing the value of our lot. Also, there's a storm drain that cuts right through the middle of our lot, which in development proposals in the past, they've kind of gone around that storm drain because you can't build on top of it. This, part of this funding would move that storm drain down future Washington and out to Healsburg Avenue. So, long story short, it makes our site more developable. They won't have to avoid that storm drain. So, if we don't put affordable housing on the site, we will have to pay back a certain amount of the money to the Affordable Housing Fund. So, for example, we do end up building a police station, correct me if any of this is wrong, Alex. If we do end up putting a police station in there, we have improved the site, so in theory, the cost of the police station will go down by the amount of the, we're investing here, or some close number, because it now has a street, curb, gutter, sidewalk, storm drain. If we did end up proceeding with affordable housing there, we wouldn't have to do, we wouldn't have to repay. So, if we did, if we did a police station or sold it, some of that money is going to have to go back into an Affordable Housing Fund. I think that's, that's. So, I'll, I'll leave it there with, with the money part, and all of that's found in the development agreement, which is part of what we're asking you to approve tonight. There's a resolution that would just approve the design and the use, and then the ordinance, the development agreement is approved by ordinance. I think Matt, Matt Stromberg is out there. He's out there in the.
And he's on the computer.
So, we're, I mean, we're asking to, that the council consider the resolution that approves the design and the use, so that's kind of planning stuff, use permit, and again, the planning commission went pretty deep on this, so they did give a hard look on it. And then the second is in ordinance because development agreements are approved by ordinance. You know, it's just part of the code. If that does go forward tonight, then on the next meeting, you'll see the second reading of the ordinance on the consent. Matt?
Thank you, Kevin. Matt, are you out there?
You're kidding, right?
That's correct. All right, thank you, Matt. Did you, either of you want to respond to anything before we start? Seeing none, I'll start here. Councilmember Lasky?
Thank you for that, Matt. Of course, my first comments are always about sustainability with electricity and what, are we thinking any battery electric storage for this building? Any emergency generators? And if so, is there a B, Bay Area Quality Management District permit involved in that scenario?
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan's turn.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. It definitely shows more of what is going to end up being built than, you know. Thank you. Gives me insight.
Thanks for the presentation. I do really appreciate the choice in the siding with the Sarah Clad Wood, Wood Series. It's a really good product, and you got a 25-year durability guarantee. I do have a few questions regarding the funding of the Washington Street. I think there's a lot of benefits that it provides to the school, benefits to the citrus fair, and certainly for the Alexander Valley Healthcare. Since some of those studies were done very early, and there was the idea of a police station, you know, kind of, kind of revisiting that as far as maybe, I'm trying to understand the urgency, maybe possibly to postpone the funding of that street to see how things move along. You know, I want to maybe consider other options that we might want to invest in some lower moderate, moderate housing fund. So, kind of what I would like to know is what is the urgency that this funding is, is needed?
Really, that isn't an Alexander Valley Healthcare question. That'd be more of the city from the negotiations that we had. I can talk a little bit to what we were discussing back in, I think it's '21, '21, '22. A lot of this, I mean, just, I'll just break it down. The main thing is efficiency and finance. So, when they're building this, it was also with the school district with the things they're doing. It was a lot cheaper for them to do it than for us to come back and do it later and redo the, the engineering, redo the geological, and then pay the rates that the city has to pay versus them who's already done the engineering, the geological, and then pay the rates that they can pay using the exact same contractor. And so, that's what we had looked at, is it was about a 50% savings for us to do it at that time using them versus us saying, we'll do it at a later date.
It's largely kind of an economies of scale.
Absolutely.
Situation. You know, my concern is that, you know, because ground hasn't broken, you know, we don't have solid plans for the police station. Is this something that we can shelf, just to make sure that we're not putting the cart before the horse?
If we're, if you're willing to double the cost that we're looking at right now, then absolutely could. So, it's that, to be honest, because with, number one, inflation, as you see right now what's going on, and then the cost that we would have for prevailing and things along those lines, and then, and then having to come back and basically reinvent the wheel that they've already done.
I guess the question to say is like, can we maybe commit our funding at the point when things are actually moving forward?
No, because then they'll, they're going to come back at us with a different number. And that's what, that's what I, that's what I would worry about, is them coming back saying, well, now it's $2 million because you waited six months. Okay. That's, that's my concern, and if anybody else has any other, or Alex, Kevin, if you think I'm wrong, please say anything else, but I'm just, I'm just kind of going off what our conversations were, so.
I think some of the urgency is they want to get going, and they need this money to, and we, we've always committed to some funding for the street, and once, they're going to be the project manager and the.
Technically, a lot of this has to happen.
What?
The sewer line is on our property, and it has to be connected. It goes through, down Citrus Fair Boulevard, and then, and so we, we technically are on the hook for that no matter what.
That's the 250,000.
250, but that's probably gone up at this point. I would imagine that, I don't think we could do it for 250.
Because I guess possibly, possibly I'm looking at maybe, you know, could be amended to cover that for sure, and maybe postpone the building of the street to, just a question, you know, because this is something to consider that, you know, it's not a ton of money to invest in housing options, but it certainly is some money to invest in housing options. So, then, I'll, I'll just kind of go over the next issues that we'll come up with.
The school and the citrus fair and Alexander Valley Healthcare and us, we had an agreement to do all of this together, and so they invested a whole bunch of money into the design of their bus stop and things in, in the good faith that we were going to do our part when they were ready. And the next portion that really hasn't gotten brought up yet but could really bite us is that school's landlocked with private property surrounding it. There is no public access to it. I don't think you can legally have it that way. And so, a citrus fair and the city own, city doesn't, none of the city's road would affect, citrus fair owns most of Washington Street. We're across the front of Washington School. And so, with this back, basically, we'll give them a public access like we're supposed to have.
I appreciate the discussion, Mayor. I think, you know, good faith is really what I'm going to lean into, that, you know, it's going to benefit the school, move this project along, and, and go forth with that, and we'll, we'll see what happens with the rest of the property there, but I think good faith is a good direction going.
And it, and it benefits us in the long run because Washington Street does need to go through for traffic flow. You see what Jefferson School, how horrible it is for them, and it's the same here, and citrus fair could technically in some days close down. Citrus Fair Boulevard, and then we'll really have a problem. But Debbie, I see yours coming up. Want to turn your mic on for me, please? Just push the button on it.
Wow, how clever. Thank you. Great question. We've been working together as a team on this very project, the, the extension of that road the whole entire time, and the bottom line is, is we can, we can.
Make sure everyone is good on everything.
I haven't had to use the mic yet tonight. All right, let's do that resolution first.
They're they're both on.
We're gonna do both at the same time? Oh, perfect. Councilmember Lasky?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganster?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passus five zero. Thank you, guys, and thank you for, uh, the good conversations on this one. And thank you, Alexander Valley Healthcare, for being here. Matt, everyone. Yeah. Where'd the crowd go? Thank you, Matt. Thank you, guys, for being here on that. Looking forward to this. All right, we're moving into the next one. New business, H1 review and discussion of proposed updated city council governance manual.
I'm taking that one. City Clerk Maloney, I'm just introducing the item really quick. So the Cloverdale Governance Manual. As you're aware, from your staff reports, pull up real quick. Um, just quick background, city council governance manual serves as a procedural and policy guide for the council, which establishes standards for governance meeting conduct and interaction between council staff and the community. As you're all aware, the current version of the governance manual was last formally adopted in 2011, so it is a bit dated and no longer reflects the way that our council conducts business for the most part. So in 2021, um, former city manager, former city clerk and staff began drafting substantial updates and modernizing our governance manual at the time. That progress halted. Um, I'm not sure why, but we decided, um, this year to, we recognize that we need to update there our new rules, new regulations, and in effort to do that, I took those drafts that they made. They had a very large matrix, a lot of information explaining why this was changed and why that was changed. Speaking to most of you, um, back then, when we started this effort, um, we decided to basically accept most of those changes because procedurally they were all accurate and just modernized, um, practices. So rather than going through an exhaustive list of every red line change from the 2011 version to this new one, because that would take hours, um, we basically created this new draft governance manual, um, that I reviewed. We looked at multiple other municipalities, um, comparable jurisdictions, as well as some larger municipalities. The draft was then reviewed by our city attorney, um, who agreed that the legal and procedural updates have been included in the current version. Um, so after this, it sounds quick, but it was an exhaustive process. We've integrated all the best practices, modernized procedures, and improved organization, resulting in this draft. So I'm going to go through it with you relatively quickly because there are a lot of pages. Hopefully, you all had a chance to review it. Today is more of an opportunity for the council to have some discussion. We have some questions for you where we want some direction, hoping that we can bring this forward next meeting, potentially on the consent calendar if able. If there's substantial edits that you guys would like or there's more discussion needed, we can always bring it back to new business. Um, but the goal is to go into 2026 with an adopted manual if possible. That's the goal. So, as you can see on my screen. I'm gonna share my screen for our online viewers. It'll be working. Three screens I'm operating on. All right. So as you can see through our table of contents, there's a lot. But I'm going to break it down. Hold on one second. I gotta pull up my own version. I won't be able to. I can't read. All right, we're gonna do this really quickly. Purpose and scope, I already kind of went over that. City information is all information that you should all be aware of as council members. A lot of this came from the packet that you've all gone through when you went and became council members. Um, so it's more informative, um, you know, things like general law city, council manager, form of government, things like that. One thing I brought into this was our mission, vision, and values. Uh, many cities have that. And the purpose of that is so that everything that council does, as you know, in a council manager form of government, you're making policy decisions. And the goal of a mission, vision, or value, and value, is so that the policies you make should align with those three. These three are with the help of, uh, my deputy director, ChatGPT. We looked at other cities and we aligned with what we felt, or I felt, really captured what council is trying to accomplish. I understand that the mission, vision, and values, I talked to the other city clerks, they had exhaustive meetings just on those three topics. So if that is something, if you guys aren't happy with the language in this, we can always adapt this governance manual, but this is an opportunity for you to suggest edits, not right now, but if you're not happy with some of these, and let me move this little but we can always adapt it, change it. Again, you're the policymakers. These mission, values, and visions should align with what you want as council members, based on your. Wanted to let you know those are in there because we speak to them throughout the, um, governance manual, kind of references them, so it's important. See that that is a change, that is something very new. The city has not had that before. It'd also be something to be on our website. City citizens can see like, what is this about? Click over. All right. This gives you some council commission information, and the reason we did this, and I, and again, I'm gonna go much faster in a little bit. I'm just giving you some quick updates. One of our goals is to eliminate the planning commission rules and regs. They have their own governance manual. It's even in poorer shape than ours. Um, it's significantly older. It doesn't reflect any of the modern practices. And rather than updating two documents simultaneously, we felt it best to make one overarching document that speaks to both. So often in here, you'll see things like chair and mayor used interchangeably. Tried to correct most of those. But every once in a while, we do break it apart where it says, we're planning commission, because they are a different entity. They have a few different, you know, they have different review authority and they have different, um, options that this thing reflects. So I just wanted to go over that really quickly because the goal in adopting this will eliminate their current. Compensation benefits, this is all basic. One change to this is there's, um, would be a method to ensure that you all get trained, that if you don't fulfill your training, I can't read it from here unfortunately, but basically it gives some tea to the council because we need you guys to be trained. You have to take those mandatory trainings that if you don't take them, I think it was like three months or six months or something like that. Um, and it's always up to the council to enforce this, that you wouldn't be compensated for those meetings going forward, so we want you to make sure to get those trained. And I'm always bugging you guys, let's get those trained, let's get those trained. Uh, but it's kind of put some tea to that. Because we need that. Um, moving forward as quick as I can, everything kind of changes until we get to the commission here. This is a discussion that we want direction from commissioner's standpoint. We have alternate commissioners, where we have five standing commissioners, two alternates. We are kind of hoping that we can eliminate the alternate positions. Obviously, we'll keep what we have now, but once those alternates traditionally become planning commissioners, once they do that, we're gonna start eliminating those alternate positions. We don't want to take away any positions that are currently filled, but we won't fill those vacancies and are hoping to eliminate it completely. Another section in here that we're looking for direction is the planning commission. Not their alternates, what is the other aspect of that? Oh, right, how they are selected. Most cities traditionally have it where each council member selects, um, a planning commissioner. That's more of a traditional way. We have it a little different where it's a power of the mayor to find them. Council still selects them as a group, but it kind of takes that burden off the mayor individually to have to seek out five people who are interested. And that's just an option. We just kind of curious if that's a traditional way in Cloverdale that we want to continue or if you want to move to another method. So if that's something that we're gonna want feedback on, um, everything else basically talks about different officer roles, as far as what the mayor does, what the vice mayor does, what, um, planning commissioners do, what the chair does. So these are all relatively procedural. One thing I will note throughout this document, um, based on feedback that we got from our council, um, was the last one was very prescriptive is the right word, I would say. It outlined so much, and it was so many pages of information that can be in the Brown Act or can be found in other places, that we don't put that here. We're trying to not be vague on purpose, but to allow the council to act in the way that, you know, aligned with the law and aligned with all those things, but not be as prescriptive, which gives a little more flexibility to council, but you'll notice that throughout. So communications, collective responsibility, I don't want to go through each one of these because that would take us all night. One update would be our legislative policy, um, which is basically one of the things that you guys know the mayor will sign letters that, we support this or we oppose this. Basically, if, as long as it aligns with this generalized policy right here, we can continue that action. Anything that the council wants to bring forward can also always come to council if they have questions about it. They can go to council for approval prior to that, but we just wanted to adopt or in other ways, um, memorialize that in this. There are some mandates. These are all basics. I'm not gonna go through them. Ethics training, harassment training, Brown Act information. Then there's administrative support. This kind of just breaks down what each of our offices, being the city manager, city attorney, and the city clerk's office, our role and how we help, um, support council members. And it kind of breaks into some different, you know, issuances like the devices we give you. If we go into ID cards or city property, things that you'd have to return at the end of your service. This really goes into meetings. This parliamentary procedure one is one that changed dramatically, only in the sense that it now reflects what we do. We have not officially adopted Robert's Rules or any of the other, um, parliamentary codes, so this basically reflects how we're operating currently. Uh, so if you have any direction to change that, please let us know. Then it goes into the types of meetings we have or can have. Then we go into attendance. It goes into seating arrangements, dress codes, duty to vote, things like that, which are all relatively basic, all language again. We adapted from our own governance manual and others. Then we moved into, this kind of breaks the different agenda sections up, kind of as an explanation. Part of this is for new council members as well who aren't as familiar. All of you are very familiar with this. But that way, anybody from the public or staff or you or future council members can read all this and really kind of have a better understanding of how these meetings work and why and what these positions do. Proclamations and recognitions now recognizes, um, you know, the community awards section that you guys now have, um, proclamations themselves, really just breaks it down. Um, one new section that we did not have previously, most cities have an adopted code of ethics. This kind of gives you a preamble about what it's about. How council members should act in the public interest, comply with the laws, et cetera. Gives it favors normal stuff, conflicts of interest. I'm not, again, gonna read each one of these, but one section it does go into that would be new, like I said, the whole thing's relatively new, but is an enforcement, but compliance investigation enforcement. And that's really for the entire governance. What do we do if a council member decides to look at this governance manual and it doesn't apply to them? They basically are breaking the rules that you guys have stated. What can you do? And this breaks down the types of policy violations and basically the enforcement. Um, again, not gonna read through it, but those are your options. Um, again, we can stop and read any of these if you'd like, but I'm just gonna go through as quick as possible. In the last page, um, this clerical edits conforming updates is one I want to make sure to advise on is basically it's giving the city clerk's office, um, or the city attorney, the ability to update this manual to ensure like, you know, say, one day you guys can, something, a new law passes and this, we need to update the manual. We don't have to bring it back to council to approve every single little section. Or one day, you know, you're, the amount that you guys, um, are paid gets updated or changed. We can just administratively make those changes, um, just to conform with updates or other, other adoptions that you as a council have made. Um, and obviously the rest are relatively basic things in a manual. So if there's any questions about any of those pages, that is it. Um, or if there's any adaptations, please let us know. We are looking for direction so that we can hopefully, again, bring this to consent, so we can get it approved. But it's your manual, so we want you to be happy.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of questions. Um, one was in the new manual, I was just kind of, uh, looking at the, um, designation for chief information officer and public information officer. I don't know if I, I missed that or if that's something that, that may be clarified.
What page was that on?
Well, I, I didn't see it, so, um, that was one of those things that maybe could be added.
Okay, like what, um, that position does?
Yeah, or designated on who, who does it.
Yeah, so there are different roles, obviously, within the EOC and stuff. We've kind of spoken on with me being our public information officer. But I can definitely encapsulate that into the city clerk section with that office. And what that entails, because I know we have a little bit of separation of powers with that as far as what the mayor will put out versus what the city manager put out versus what I'll put out.
But yeah, clarify any confusion in case something would need to be clarified. So, thank you.
And that's very different in our emergency operations center where we, we set it up to where it's, it comes out from the city manager. In their absence, they can always give me information. I push it out.
And, um, one other thing was just looking at the old manual and the new manual, uh, wanted to carry over the language uh, under the election of officers from the old manual. Um, this one is for the mayor that he or she presides over council meetings and serves as a spokesman on behalf of the city. I want to, would like to carry that over into the new manual. It's, it's not listed, and, uh, the mayor is the titular head of the city council is also not listed. It, it kind of jumps right into, uh, uh, you know, the mayor serves as a presiding officer, so if, if we can carry that old language into the, to the new manual.
And I guess with this, um, maybe it would help mayor if everyone agrees with each of those so they can move a little faster.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you all okay with?
Anybody has a discrepancy or?
I think that's it. I'll just note him as.
Speak up. Otherwise, I'm, I'm, I haven't heard a thing that I even want to. Great. What?
Um, that's it. You know, I guess I can, you know, give my opinion on the planet, planning commission selection, or maybe we'll go over that at, uh, would we do that now or?
We can do that right now, actually. It might be good. Um, go ahead.
You know, I'm open to, you know, everyone selecting the planning commission. Uh, you know, it's kind of like those things need to go through the council anyway. That's just my thought on that. Uh, and then clerical edits, I was wondering if that would, would that also include something like, um, the removal of subcommittees if that changes in the future?
Exactly, yeah. So if you guys pass a resolution or something that, um, adopt, adapt something that we have already approved.
Okay.
Then that resolution supersedes the previous, you know, kind of thing, but I would update our manual to just like that subcommittee and regional board appointments. I would just delete subcommittee and just regional board appointment.
Excellent. Thank you.
Doesn't have to be that way. We just felt it would be easier than constantly bringing this back for smaller edits, but.
And also, great job, Mike Maloney and, uh, city attorney Alex Mogg. Uh, you know, I think this is pretty brilliant and a needed update. Thank you.
I got one thing real quick. What was that? Run that by me again without going through the whole thing on the commissioners, how you were talking. Rotate and drop one off and not have alternates?
Yeah, so, well, it was, it's traditionally kind of hard to get applicants in general. Um, so it is nice, in a sense, to, frozen con. You can have five board members. Kind of like if we have you five council members, but if we don't have a quorum and we had an alternate council member, it'd be awesome to pull them to the table. Hard enough to get volunteers to want to be a planning commissioner and stay as a planning commissioner, but the alternates right now are put in. They're only on two-year terms, so administratively, we have to keep moving the path. They have to also, you know, file Form 700s. They have to take the harassment training. They have to do all these things, and they're not even a voting member. Most of the time, they don't even get to act in the five seats. They're sitting up here, so even for a seating arrangement purpose, we're like, why? Many cities wish they had alternates. Some don't, so we could go either way, Kevin. I don't know. As you've been with our planning commission longer, if you want.
We always have a quorum. I mean, it's never been a problem since I've been here having a quorum, and the alternates, they're like the bench. I mean, they do come up, which is nice, but I think it's overkill to have two alternates.
I guess that's where I'm going with, I guess, my suggestion beyond that is what you were saying is let's just have the five planning commissioners and not have the alternates. Less headache for everybody's staff time, whatever. You know what I mean?
And as.
To manage them.
As the regular commissioners, yeah.
Exactly.
We just rotate them and then we'll start.
Would you rather that effective immediately, so our current alternates are done, or do we keep them until?
I like, I like, uh, the idea of having alternates. I think it's a good pathway to get into the planning commission. Certainly, you know, you don't want to end up in a situation where you're kind of, you know, looking for folks, so, um, I think it's a good pathway.
It is one of the benefits is that we know if someone leaves, you have an immediate concession plan.
And, and, you know, sort of it being a citizen, citizen committee that, you know, that's somebody else chiming in. And I think, you know, our alternates do participate in, in, in input, so I would, uh, lean towards keeping them.
While there's not, it's not a necessarily discussion item here, it has been something that's been brought up is the planning commission in general. Um, I know some of their authority has been changed over the time, and that's not up for debate right now, but whether or not a planning commission is required or necessary is something that may come to the council at some point, uh, at your discretion.
We can bring that up in the future, uh, but as of right now, it's not on this topic. We can do is we could suggest we alternate, uh, commissioners. So if we choose not to fill them as a council or as a city at that moment, we don't have to. But if your wording in here is that it suggested that we have alternate commissioners, then we can always choose if we want to have them or not as, as a council. Uh, the other thing, which I support everybody choosing, uh, a commissioner, I think that's a great idea. The reason it's done that way is because everybody lives in districts. Have that yet until we're sued. So, um, as of right now, we don't have districts, but I still think it's a good idea for somebody, even if it's just to bring ideas to it, whatever it is.
And often what I noticed, even prior to Santa Rosa shifting to districts, that's where I was from, I handled their planning commission there. You know, like when the new council members come on board, they may not have somebody in mind. They often just go to the planning commissioner that's already there and go, hey, do you want to continue serving? Great. And that usually happens.
I think it's better the way it is because in this small community that we have, we already have all the input and we work it out together anyways. I, I don't think there's a single one that I've chosen on my own as the mayor in the past four years. I mean, and I've been part of every single person sitting on the panel. So I, I don't think I've ever chosen one just by myself. It's been city, city manager, council, everybody.
Well, the mayor does rotate, so.
Totally.
Does sort of.
I'm open to either.
Yeah.
We'll keep it as is.
I would keep, I would personally keep it as is until we were, until we were larger with this.
And just like anything, they have to submit an application.
They rotate.
Perfect. Okay.
Yes, okay.
I read the whole thing last night, the new one. I tried to compare the old one to compare, um, but then I got lost. I mean, because the pages don't.
Oh, yeah, they don't align.
Um, but anyway, I think you did a good job and got BT, whatever, did a good job and, um, I thought it was reasonable.
Good job, Mike. Uh, yeah, I don't have any, any issues with, uh, the way it's presented, the way you did it, your background with other city and other clerks. So, yeah, I'm good with the way it's written.
All right, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anyone want to make a comment on this? Saying none?
As a planning commissioner, you feel like this would, I don't know, you have not just probably read it, but, um, compared to the rules and regs you have now, do you think that this would better incorporate into the planning commission? Sorry, mayor.
Well, now you, now that you've.
I know. I really want a public commenter.
I, I, I made solid eye contact with our planning commissioner and he didn't want any part of this, so. I'm gonna have to ask you to turn the microphone on for the Zoom.
I, Bill Wegi, Cloverdale resident and planning commissioner. I, I think the current system works fine, but if it's difficult to manage the alternates, I think that's okay too.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it and appreciate your commitment. All right, saying nothing else, we'll bring it back up. Um, this is only a review and discussion. Is there anything else anyone sees different? These are very minor, uh, things, so I think the person, I think it could be put on our consent calendar. If there's any issues, we can always pull it. Thank you, guys. And Mike, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. And Alex, thank you. It's, it's, it's nice having it attorney vetted before it reaches.
Yeah, there were, there were some positive red lines. I just appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move into, uh, council member reports. Start over this way.
Um, so council member report for, uh, the session, uh, Thursday, November 6th, uh, was present at a, for a presentation by Don McEnhill. He's with Russian Riverkeeper. I spoke about, uh, invasive species all along our watershed, uh, specifically the Arundo Donax. Uh, I think our, also our city staff, Parks Department does a great job at eradicating it. It sounds like a real pain in the butt. Uh, but that work is being done here, so, um, also later that day, uh, I took part in the Russian River Confluence Steering Committee. Shared some updates on, uh, our partnerships, kind of, you know, working with, uh, Michael Thompson, um, including ongoing discussions around selective aggregate management. So that's one of those things that's coming to, uh, our, uh, Sonoma County Supervisors under their Hazard Mitigation Plan. The, the aggregate management is really a delicate topic that really can help, but it can also hurt in, in the way you do it. So it's important that we're selective about how we deal with it. Um, also update on the, uh, work with the Grange Hall. Uh, the painting in the auditorium and entryway is complete. Uh, we had some help with a lot of volunteers. Uh, really want to, um, really give credit to two volunteers, Dana Starr and Christine Johnson, that were absolutely critical in, uh, getting up on the ladders and, and getting some of the high stuff done. Uh, but, you know, it took a, a big team of folks to come in there and get it done, including Sally Pringle. She was also here earlier this evening. And, uh, just to keep an eye out for, uh, the Board of Supervisors meeting, uh, on December 9th. Uh, one of the items that will be on there will be the, uh, the, the $75,000 funding for the, uh, the Grange Hall repairs. And, uh, also want to report that last month, uh, $10,000 funding was approved by the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors, uh, through the fiscal year 25 to 26 Tourism Impact Grant Awards, and that $10,000 is money that's going to our Cloverdale Food Pantry to help with, with their needs and providing protein to our community. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one thing from, we actually had an airboard meeting, and, uh, I just need to sit down and talk with Public Works Director. There's gonna be a grant out there, and they're really looking at, some of the cities have moved from, uh, gas, um, all the tools for our Parks Department. They're moving to the electric ones. There's, uh, it's been, people have been very receptive to it. They know that there's still gas stuff out there that they need, but they're trying to move into the electric stuff, and they will switch back and forth, so I'm working that grant angle right now with the, uh, airboard and see what we can do. Once I get more information, we'll sit down and just need to get an inventory on all, everything we have and what they could use and, uh, see if we can get that thing punched through.
Yeah, along with council member, uh, Vice Mayor Wheeler's comments about switching back from gas and electric. I attended, uh, Sonoma Clean Power meeting last week, and there's, they've just received some grant money to help people get into some of those electric, uh, changeover to electric appliances. So if you, uh, you have a need, please, uh, see Sonoma Clean Power's, uh, website and, uh, click on the links and that'll, uh, take you to some of the programs that they offer. And then I would also, one more thing. I was out of town, but I, I missed, uh, I'm trying to make all the ribbon cutting ceremonies. I would, uh, I would encourage the council members to go out and, uh, shake hands, meet the business owners who are creating actual jobs for the community. So, uh, not proposed, these are actual businesses opening up. We want to encourage them to stay here in town and, uh, promote them.
I attended the mayor's and councilman's, uh, dinner along with some other council members. The mayor was missing, but, um, anyway. We missed you. Um, and I also attended Halloween at the Plaza along with council member Andreas Marquez. And it was a fun time for all the children and some adults came along too, so it was very enjoyable.
Thank you. Uh, my regional committees have not met this month. We have been working downtown prepping for the winter festival. Um, we've been kind of volunteering, helping out public work staff, and I really want to thank them for all their hard work they're putting in, seeing it done ahead of schedule and the vegetation management that they've been doing. Seeing it done ahead of schedule and the vegetation management that they've been doing. Cloverdale's looking really nice down, downtown, the plaza's, uh, really clean and all the light poles have their lights on them. And it looks really cool driving through town today, so I want to thank them for all of that. All right, uh, city manager, uh, there's no letters, it's a course of city manager report.
Just real quick, we're going to be closed the week of Thanksgiving on City Hall, we'll put a phone number if anyone needs anything urgently. Our next meeting is December 10th, it's going to be a big one, there's lots of things on there. Uh, we are currently recruiting for the Measure D and UUT Oversight Committee, we haven't received any applications, so if anyone knows anyone who's, be a couple of meetings a year, it's not a big obligation. Um, our Soda Springs is moving forward, we're hoping to have it open this year, I think we will, I don't know. We probably will have a grand opening in January, um, maybe December, but with the holidays, probably January. Employee appreciation dinner is 12:12, so anyone, I think, uh, Chief, not here anymore, sent out a, an RSVP, if you didn't get that, let me know. Um, just, and I think everyone knows we closed on the lot and the buildings downtown, and so we're, um, going to be putting up a tent in anticipation of Winterfest, uh, next week. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Kev, I have something to add. Um, we're looking for two AARP volunteers to help us with the tax clinic round tax time for, um, people that would like to get their, low income people that would like to get their taxes done for free. So we just need a couple of volunteers. And they would be trained, so.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, I would like to just add a quick note under the legislative reports. Uh, letters of support and opposition. Uh, the PV, well, Powder Valley Project decommissioning, public comment period is open until December 1st, 2025. Uh, so this is if our, any members of the public want to make a, uh, a, a public comment, you can, uh, go to FERC online. That's the Federal Energy Regulation Commission, it's, uh, F E R C online dot F E R C dot gov. And you go under the e-filing tab, uh, it'll be the docket number P dash 77 dash 332. And, uh, you can submit your public comment there.
Thank you. All right, councilal direction on future agenda items.
I've noticed online a lot of people are kind of upset about, um, Alexander Valley Healthcare having a bigger space. So I was just thinking, maybe the city, if people were on board with this, could facilitate a town hall with Alexander Valley Healthcare where people could ask questions or, or make suggestions on how they would like their healthcare to be so that they're not so opposed to having Alexander Valley Healthcare do it, you know, move into a bigger building and expand.
Kevin and I can reach out and speak to Debbie.
Yeah. I'll see, yeah, we can get Debbie, I mean, she would be the main.
It, it would be her choice on everything, but we can, we'll reach out.
I'm sure she'll be on board.
And, you know, voice her concerns.
I'm in support of that, it's good, uh, you know, there's board positions open and people might want to join and, and get active, so that's a great idea.
Future agenda item, did you have anything?
Uh, I, I do not have any future agenda items, thank you.
Mayor, just to clarify the record, the AVH Town Hall would be put on by Alexander Valley Healthcare, not by the city like the.
That, that's correct, and it would be something that we will, we're just going to tell them the concerns and see if they want to. Um, I have three future agenda items, uh, that I want to see if we can get, uh, support for. First one is the two new business, or two businesses on the new property are, um, over on their leases. And so I would like to give Kevin the, um, opportunity to try to maybe establish like a one-year lease while we decide what to do with that property. And so they can feel comfortable being there and while we negotiate and talk about it, maybe we can, uh, just re-up their contract for 12 months, give him some. I haven't seen them, so I don't know what they look like, but I would like to make that the, the businesses feel comfortable being there and know that we're not trying to evict them in the next 60 days type of thing. But I would like to give him some leeway and then bring it back to closed session in a month so that we can take a look at it and, uh, approve it. Either open or closed, I don't, I don't think we have to do open, do we have, on that, Alex? I think that he would have the authority.
Yeah, we, we could, uh, we need to approve it in open session, but we can.
We discuss it.
Bring you the deal points in close to see if that's what.
You're ready. I think it'd be good because both business owners have approached most of us probably, and I think it'd be nice to make them feel comfortable and know that we're not trying to evict them. I see a lot of nodding heads, awesome, okay? Uh, the second one I have is I think that we should, uh, bring the new property to, uh, like the Finance Admin Subcommittee and discuss options and ideas and give the community somewhere to speak about it. Uh, without doing, um, an online survey or anything along those lines, I want, I would rather have people in person. And I think it'd be nice to vet some ideas and then bring it back to closed session for all of council so that we can make decisions together and then bring it to open from there to finalize any ideas, but, um, I think that'd be good to send that part to a subcommittee so that we could figure out what some ideas are that are out there that are actually financially feasible or usable for the council and then have us discuss it as a whole when we pick those out. I see a couple heads, go ahead.
Well, I, I think in person is great, but I think we should also do, uh, social media, Mike's the guru on that, especially when we did, you know, the dog one and, uh, the downtown plaza, I think we had a bigger input than trying to invoke people to come in front of the council to give the right ideas.
Which is exactly what my worry was, yeah, there's one person sending 500 ideas that aren't possible.
Well, no, I understand it, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, it's.
But that's, that's the smite, so I'm, I'm open, I'm engaged.
You want to engage the public?
I have something. Maybe rather than do the, uh, survey right away, let it go to the subcommittee and from there, you know, if there's enough interest or enough ideas, then develop it into a survey.
Yep, um, thanks. So, I, I do like the idea of, of kind of, when things are in a conceptual stage, like throw out every idea. And it's like certainly, um, great for everyone to get every single idea, whether it's crazy or it's feasible, just, just throw them out on the table. Um, so I'm, I would be for putting something online or reaching out to, um, folks like the, uh, the students at Berkeley, you know, some, some ideas like that. I do, would prefer that maybe this didn't go to a subcommittee, uh, that it maybe was at a council and maybe we could just go directly into, um, you know, having the public come and, and share their input that way.
I think we ought to. I mean, I like to, I like the, uh, concept of, of sending it to a subcommittee and, and kind of, I don't want to do the survey thing, I'm against the survey. I think there's going to be too many ideas out there and it's just going to add more time for us to sift through them, a lot of them. This is a, going to be a huge project and, I mean, it's a money thing. You know, we're going to have a lot of them out there where people want, 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 and, um, a lot of it's not realistic, so there's going to be a lot of disappointment that comes in with that. So I think we had to sit down at a subcommittee, come up with some that all the council agrees on is, hey, here's five things that we actually can do and, and start working that angle right there.
Can I revisit my comment?
Please.
That's okay.
Because we're kind of like in a mix right now.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to lean towards, uh, Vice Mayor on this one. And, and one of those things, it's like, really? The truth is, I, I don't want a, a bunch of wild ideas, I kind of want to keep the businesses there. Uh, this is a future, uh, project that would possibly happen in 20, 30 years, so I think it's, for me, the really, I just kind of think there's one solution, is trying to, uh, give some assurance to the business owners.
Well, then right now it sounds like there's two that want to survey, three that want a subcommittee, does that sound accurate? And with the subcommittee, um, bring the ideas back to open session so that we can all discuss them together. I think that we, what we can do to kind of maybe aid it a little bit is we can really promote that subcommittee meeting so that people know that we're going to have it and we maybe even have it here, if, if, if we get a lot of response online. Then we can change the location at the last minute, or not last, within a week. If we start promoting, a lot of people are responding, then maybe then we open a bigger venue for it. That sound fair to everybody? Does that cover needs? Okay. Awesome, thank you guys.
That's true, that my, my thoughts for these ideas and the crazy ideas, they're, they're 30 years down the road, it's not anything I want to do anytime soon.
Right. There's, there's short term and then there's long term, and I, we have to be very careful with how many ideas are thrown at us and how long, how much time you have on your hands. Uh, the third idea I had is your outpost building, uh, knowing that it's a decent building. I think that right now maybe we should try to get some net positive going. Um, I walked it the other day with Hector and I think that we could divide it up into three different areas and, and benefit as a city from things like our, uh, Public Works Director's rent that we pay towards that building. We could, uh, update that building and move them into portion of it. I know the post office has been really been looking hard and wanting to rent a space and talked about that a lot with us as soon as it went up for sale. And then, uh, we could also talk about a third renter, I think, that we could get in there, make it a net positive. And I think that that would be a, a win-win for the city if we invest a little bit of money into that building to turn it around. And I, you know, just walking in as a contractor, $100,000, you could remodel that entire building with every single thing you need. And so the money that I calculate in a year and a half will be on the net positive. And my, and, and you're investing into your, your property, basically. And so I wanted to see if we can get direction to give our city manager the ability to bring something back in December on our, on our agenda to discuss and have an action item to make decisions on. Not that, I, I'm not saying this is exactly what we want, I'm just saying, I'm giving him leeway of my ideas and then, and then, anything you guys have? Bring it to him so that he can take those ideas and bring them back to us. I support it, but I really like to get something going on, so that we're making money on it. It's easy. There, there you go, Kevin, more work for you. All right.
Wait, mayor.
Any other future agenda items?
Mayor, really quickly for the record.
Yes.
You summarize that last one.
Yes, so, uh, we're giving the city manager, uh, leeway to, uh, make a plan for up to $100,000 to bring back to us on, on December meeting to remodel the outpost building and plan for up to three renters. Does that sound accurate? Awesome. All right, with that, guys, welcome to having long meetings, if we want to have them, this is how they go and they're horrible. Uh, meeting adjourned at 9:41, thank you everyone for being here. Oh, I do not miss these meetings when they went like this.